Conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everybody. Call to order this city council meeting of January the 17th, 2023. If we can get a roll call.
Councilmember Strowman?
Here.
Councilmember Walker?
Here.
Councilmember Engel?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Hagan?
Here.
And Mayor Bellinger?
Here. All right, I'd ask everybody to please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first item on here is our consent calendar. These items are considered routine in nature and are acted upon by a single action unless requested by an individual council member or a member of the public for special consideration. So open it up to the group here.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to pull items two and four for further clarification.
All right. Anything else?
I'm fine.
Take a motion on the balance?
A motion on one and three?
I'll second.
So we have a motion and a second to move and approve items one and three of the consent calendar. Can I get all those in favor? Say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries five oh. So our questions on number two, Councilmember Strowman.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. So I would like to abstain from check number 078282, which is the stipend, $50 stipend that I received from Planning Commission. And then I did have a question for, so peep. So there is a charge. There's a cellphone refund for former Mayor Ed Owes for $265.80 from January to June of 2023. I just wondered what that was about.
Hello, good evening. It was a prepayment from Ed for cellphone services for the month of January 2023 through June 2023, but once when we got the new contract with AT&amp;T, we excluded some cellphones that were on there, and one of them happened to be Ed. So we gave him a refund back for their prepayment in advance for the period from January 2023 through June 2023.
So was that a city phone or was it a personal phone?
It was his personal phone.
Okay, and the city was reimbursing him towards part of the cost?
And it was the cost that he was reimbursing the city for, for his personal cellphones.
Oh, okay.
So it was his personal cellphone. And then he would normally prepay us for advance for the use of the cellphones. And then due to the change in the contract, we're terminating, terminating his cellphones. So therefore, we were just refunding him the remaining balance that was owed back to him.
Okay. Thank you. No further questions.
And you had a question on item number four? Not sure if that has a go-to meeting. Could you mute yourself, please?
And Mayor, just a point of clarification. Would you like to take the vote on item two if that's complete, or take item two, then item four after you've discussed the vote?
We can do them both. If we can do them both at the same time, we'll do them both at the same time, if that's okay?
Okay. And then my question for number four is, as I understand, the existing contract expired in December 31st, 2022.
Oh, they hung up?
Okay.
Okay.
I'm better. So as I was saying, the current contract for Etrans Transit System expired in December, on December 31st, 2022. My question is, did we, when we knew that contract was going to expire, did we reissue an RFP for this, for it to be awarded to MTM?
John, would you like to follow up on that question?
Yeah, I heard some of it. Can you repeat the question so I can better hear it?
Sure. Councilmember Strowman was asking if we put the transit services that expired at the end of December out for an RFP.
No, we got, we contacted multiple vendors to get quotes to operate the transit system because it's under the federal threshold of 250,000. And we were not successful in finding vendors until recently, when we were able to find two potential vendors that were interested. All the vendors we surveyed said they would not bid because our service was too small, and they didn't have enough resources to support our operation.
So did, John, when did we contact those vendors? Did we contact them after the RFP was, or after we were, it was made known to us that the existing contract would not be agreed to, or when was that?
When did we first reach out to the companies?
We started reaching out to them in, let's see, in January of last year, when Stan RTA advised to us, no, excuse me, March of last year, when Stan RTA advised to us that they were wanting to no longer operate our transit system.
And so we received a proposal from MTM, and then from who? Who was the second company?
I,
Who was the second company?
The second company is Ride Trans.
Okay.
We also had a third company, but they dropped out. And that third company was Apex Systems out of San Francisco.
Did we reach out to Stor?
Yes, we did. And they turned down, said they didn't have resources to operate.
Okay.
When I reached out to them last year.
Okay. I have no further questions.
And I would ask for a motion on items two and four of the consent calendar?
All motion.
I'll second.
A motion to approve in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries five oh.
Thank you, John.
Lots of beeps going on there. All right, matters presented from the audience. Public may address the city council on any item that is on the agenda at the time the item is called. The public may also address the city council on any item that is not on the agenda that is within the subject matter of the city of Escalon. Each speaker is limited to a maximum of five minutes. Unused time may not be yielded to another speaker. You may state your name and address for the record, however, it is not required. Action will not be taken on any item as this is not on the agenda. If it is, if it requires action, it will be referred to staff and/or placed on a future agenda. The determination of whether an item is within the subject matter of the city is at the discretion made by the mayor. So is there anybody out there who would like to speak on something?
Say that the audience at home still can't hear. I just got a message, and it says there's no audio. It says it looks like the city clerk is logged in as a video feed and an audio feed separately, but the audio is still muted, so nobody can hear.
Thanks, Barry. Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question? City manager?
Do you want me to log out? Do you want me to log out and re-log in?
No, he's saying city clerk, so it's this one. This one's city clerk, too.
And then just as a heads up, for Brown Act purposes, the meeting wasn't agendized as a hybrid meeting. It was just basically a privilege to be able to call in an unattended person. So we don't have to stop the meeting if we can get the tech issues up and running, but.
Thank you.
We can work on those while you guys are moving.
Okay, go ahead. Yes, what can we do for you tonight?
Gabriella Vargas. I own 1010 First Street. I have a two-part question. One is, there is, I guess the question would be, if a tree is on somebody's property but extends over into the sidewalk and the street, causing damage to vehicles as they are passing by because it extends so far, is that something that needs to be brought up with the homeowner, or is the city responsible for code enforcement on that?
Both would be the answer. I would personally talk to the owner because it's their tree and it's their responsibility. But if it's obviously a safety issue, and if it's hindering vehicles, that's something that we would definitely code enforce and stay on top of them to make them address it.
Okay, so I can talk to the owner first then, and then?
That's just a suggestion. Hopefully, they will listen to you and do it. But if you're not getting anywhere with that, you can definitely come in and either stay anonymous or not and fill out a form, and we'll address it.
I don't need to be anonymous. Okay, second thing is, I had brought up the issues with the potholes in the alley next to my house. While I appreciate the effort of the public works going out there and attempting to remedy the situation, it was a half-assed job. And as a result, yesterday, a little eight-year-old boy fell in one of the holes and broke his arm. So just wondering if we could maybe step it up and actually, I know, I know it's an alley, it's rocks, and it's not plausible to make it look like a street and with asphalt. However, there are huge dips in there still, and were still there. The day that you guys came, we walked it that afternoon, and I'm like, really? This is the, you know, I mean, I don't know if they were pulling rocks from the side and there wasn't enough, but it wasn't done properly or completely, I will say, to begin with. And now with the rains, they're just as deep as they were, and now we have an injured child. So this is the second person that's been injured in this alley, so maybe we can take it a little more seriously and?
Well, in, in defense of public works, I think they did a great job.
Really?
I do, because it's a dirt alley, and we went in with road base, which is a better and did compaction. But due to the rain, just like you see on the roads with the asphalt, I was just down the alley today and have it on the list tomorrow because of sun to address those holes. But it's, would be extremely hard for us to do anything other than a road base because of concrete or asphalt would be your next two things that you want to put in there. And we don't have the funds or the means to go do that in there, so.
I understand.
But we will, just we, safety is a major priority to us, and it offends me, some of the things that you just said about the department and us not caring, because that's not the fact, and that's not the truth. But we will do everything in our power to make it as safe as possible.
And, and my intention is not to offend you, but you're sitting here with pride on the work that was done? That was substandard. And, and so if that, if that is the quality of the work, then I think that the city needs to have somebody come out there and, and double check what is being done. Because again, this is not about what I feel or what you feel. This is now two individuals, one elderly man and one young child, who have become injured as a result of something that is the city's responsibility. So yes, I am angry, and if you want to take it personally, that's fine. But this is your job and your responsibility to make sure that this kind of stuff does not happen. And that's my bottom line. So however you want to deal with it, that's fine. But the next time, if you're looking at a lawsuit, that's on you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay?
Have a great night.
Anybody else from the audience?
Hello, my name is Phyllis Govea, and I would like to bring up something that has come into my attention. With all the flooding and everything that's going on, do we have any kind of emergency response team volunteers that would come together? And do we have like a, a place for people to go if we had a major power outage or a flood here in Escalon? I don't know. I think it happened one time. Like maybe a community center for us to, to actually evacuate? Do we have something like that in place? Officer or chief maybe be able to?
Yes, we do. We have the community center, and we have the library that we can open. We've done it in the past where it was cold. We've turned the Escalon Library into a warm center. When the cold, the heat comes out, we turn that same thing into a cool center. I was in direct contact with OES throughout the storm, updating them with any information from the city. I spoke with both Public Works Director and both Dominique and find out if there was any issues in the city that needed to be addressed. Nothing came up other than the, the small flooding that we had over in Campbell and outside, on the east side at Herald and 120. So yeah, we do have a plan to activate in case of emergency. We also have contact with OES. If we need staff, we need people, we need emergency bags, sand, anything like that, they're willing to supply that, that's the product or the items for us to, to act on that.
I guess what I was trying to ask, is there, is there training for community to be involved, volunteers? So if there was something like that to happen? I know we were talking at the church, you know, if people needed food or anything like that, for community to be trained for emergency, like the STARS, is it the men that patrol or anything for emergency training?
Well, we do have a volunteer program at the police department. You're more than welcome to look into it if you want to be part of that. We're always looking for, for members to be in the volunteer program.
Okay.
Do that.
Yeah, that'd be great. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else from the audience, or on the go-to meetings if we have that connection available at the current moment? All right, seeing none, we'll close matters presented from the audience. Move on to staff communication and updates. Were there any questions on what was in our packet?
So before you, we have the monthly reports for the month of December, which include the Treasurers Report, the Police Department Activity Report, our Animal Control Report, Recreation Report, Development Services Report, Public Works Department Report, Building Department Report, Water Department Report, and our Wastewater Treatment Plant Report, all for the month of December.
Any questions?
Sure, I have a question.
Sure.
On the Treasurers Report, what, in cash balances by fund, right there, what would a negative account reflect?
So if you're referring, sorry, if you're referring to Fund, what is it?
204.
204. That one, we're waiting for the Prop 68 Part Grant for 182,000. So we've submitted a claim to them, but just haven't received it yet. So we've already spent it, but just pending a reimbursement from the state for the 182,000 dollars.
Okay. And then the?
The rest. The 220 LLD, those are related to property tax. We've received the funds, but it was recorded in January 2023. So the negative balance would be related to routine maintenance, related to pipes and sprinklers, repairs, and things like that. And the, the payments were received in January. So you'll, if you, the January/December Treasurers Report will reflect the positive balance versus the negative.
On both of those funds?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And then if you're looking at transit, that's based on a reimbursement type of fund. So it's, you spend it, and then you submit a claim to federal and state or local agencies for the funds to reimburse those.
And that's, has been done as well?
Mm-hmm.
And if there's no item, other questions on that item, we do have a report from Ann Shaddix on the San Joaquin County Commission on Aging.
Any other questions? All right, let's go ahead and hear from Ann.
I just wanted to, since you are essentially part new council and repeating council people, I just wanted to just briefly tell you what we do as Commissioner on Aging for San Joaquin, which I'm a volunteer and appointed by the city council to do that position, or to serve in that position. And basically, it's a very broad position that has all types of resources available to it. And I'm going to give you one example to show you how broad it is. The Commissioner before me, Audrey, she took on a project to get the blinking light across 120 at the Heritage House in place. She worked hard with the team in, in San Joaquin. Of course, when you, when you take on a project like that, it doesn't happen overnight. But at that time, it was very important to our seniors because they were afraid of walking across 120. That project ended up with the county paying to put that in place. So that's only one example. We work on all kinds of programs for, for seniors. We, we are available to, to help people, which we've helped many, many people, especially during COVID. There were people that, that couldn't get the resources that they needed or didn't know how to get them. One of the reasons they couldn't get help is because the programs that were developed were so great, but they weren't working. So we had to find out from our, in my case, from our Escalon people to find out so we could help them. Telephones weren't being answered by these service organizations when people were desperate for, for help. So, so part of our job is to present new programs. Part of it's to participate in new programs. We have, I have a wealth of information available, so if you're working on a project, please call me, let me know. I can probably help you. And I might have already done some research on it. So I'm just, at, at your other meetings, I will go into specifics, but the primary function is to serve our seniors, to make sure that they have the services available to them, that they know about it. If they don't know about it, they can ask, and then we get the information to them. We have, fortunately, in Escalon, because of the way we're structured, we have the Fun Bunch Group, which has a newsletter. So we're able to communicate out through newsletters. Our team and our people are good at making phone calls. So I'm, I'm encouraging you that if you hear of someone that's, that has a need, let us know, because we can probably find assistance to help with their rent, to help with their food, to help with medical. Just ask, and we research it. So that's just a real quick overview, and you'll be hearing more specifics at future meetings.
Ann?
Ann?
Excuse me, Ann, can I ask you a quick question? Sorry, I apologize, I should have got to you a little quicker. Do you feel like that's the, that information is disseminated properly? Like, is it getting to everyone? Like, you've mentioned a newsletter. Is that actually going to all the seniors in town, or is that one specific group that's getting it?
That's a very good question, Councilman Hagan. Thank you. Actually, it's, it's going to those that have signed up in the Fun Bunch. And I probably should have said, the Fun Bunch is a senior group that has been started to, for seniors to come to socialize and to be active. So yes, it goes only to those that have signed up for the news, for the newsletter, which is free for them. It's free. The program to come to the senior program is free. It's free to get the newsletter. We also make announcement there. So, so we try to get flyers up also in the lunchroom. Are there more ways to do it? You bet there's more ways. And we need to think about how to further improve that communication, because there's so many programs out there that are available to seniors.
It'd be nice to be able to streamline that process somehow, so that it's very readily available to seniors. And so if there's any ideas out there from the community or, or up here, I think that wouldn't be a bad idea to kind of look into that deeper. That's all, that's all I had to ask. I'm sorry.
That's a great idea. Thank you for that.
Thank you for your time.
All right, we good, team? All right, moving on to our public hearing, item number seven, Consider An Appeal Of The Planning Commission's Decision Regarding Project Applicant 22-768. This item is an appeal of the Planning Commission's consideration and denial for a CUP concerning the Almond Grove Mobile Home Park expansion. This hearing is being conducted pursuant to the authority contained in the Escalon Municipal Code, as well as procedural requirements created by case law. My role as mayor will be to act as the presiding officer of this hearing. The city council's role in this matter is to decide whether to grant the appeal application for approval of the conditional use permit in connection with this project. So the contents of the appeal and its supporting evidence are before the council. The appeal will proceed as follows. I'll open the public hearing. City staff will first present a staff report. The appellant will then present its appeal and any evidence relating to its appeal. Members of the city council will ask questions if they have any, and of the city staff or the appellant. Members of the public will then have an opportunity to comment on the appeal. And as normal, with matters presented from the audience, each speaker will have a maximum of five minutes. Appellant will then have an opportunity to present additional evidence in rebuttal to points raised by the public or questions posed by the city council. So staff, you can present. Staff?
And Mayor, if I may, we have two council members who I believe will need to state for the record that they are recusing on this matter due to having considered it at the Planning Commission level. And recusal under the rules will require you to actually leave all the way, and then we will call you back for the next item.
Thank you.
And I'll just put on the record that it's council members, John Strowman and Jeremy Engel, who were members of the Planning Commission at the time this item was before the commission.
And one more note from me before we get started, is that because we have all five council members present, but we have two who are recusing, the action on this item will have to be unanimous among you three to go one way or the other. And so a non-unanimous vote will mean that the appeal is handled in the way that the Planning Commission, basically, you take the Planning Commission's vote as the final vote if you can't reach a unanimous vote on this item. So I wanted to put that upfront so that as you're considering the evidence, you'll know to make a decision contrary to what the Planning Commission has decided, it'll have to be all three of you.
Thank you. Come back here shortly, and we'll get started.
Okay. Item before you, project application 22768, which is a conditional use permit. The location is 2505 Jackson Avenue, 2307 Jackson Avenue, formerly known as Paddock Mobile Park, now known as Almond Grove, and owned by Almond Grove Manufactured Housing Community. The zoning of the property is currently R1. In accordance with the general plan, that's low-density residential. And the background and overview on this item, the city received a conditional use permit application to allow the addition of six mobile home units with associated parking spaces in the Almond Grove Manufactured Housing Community. The conditional use permit application was denied by Planning Commission at the November 15th, 2022 meeting. Background for the project, including the staff report, exhibits, and minutes from the November Planning Commission are attached to this report. The applicant has filed an appeal with city council pursuant to Chapter 17.59 of the Escalon Municipal Code, which provides that any person disagreeing with a decision made by the Planning Commission involving the application of the zoning title may appeal that decision to the city council, subject to all requirements of Escalon Municipal Code, Section 17.59.030-130. Note that in considering this appeal, the city council may consider the matter in its entirety and is its entirety and is not limited to the scope of the Planning Commission's discussion, and it may add, modify, or delete project conditions as it deems necessary or proper. Potential concerns of the Planning Commission were as follows, and this was related to the proposed project, which are further expanded upon in the findings sections below. Number one was the single ingress egress point for emergency services access to the project. Number two was the privacy concerns for the neighbors on Spring Drive. And number three were the setbacks and density of the proposed manufactured housing units that do not conform to the general plan and zoning code. When approving a conditional use permit, requests to expand non-conforming uses, the Planning Commission and/or city council must evaluate whether it can make all of the following findings found in the municipal code, Section 17.56030, for use permits. Letter A is that the use is necessary or desirable in the, in relation to the purposes of the Escalon General Plan, this title, and economic, social, and environmental status of the city. Regarding this item, the proposed six-unit expansion appears to not be desirable in relation to the purposes of the Escalon General Plan and the municipal code, as the layout of the proposed units does not align with the density and setback standards of the underlying R1 zone. The proposed layout is similar to the existing products already available on the park. The proposed expansion of the Mobile Home Park with the same product, or with the same type of product already available on the rest of the park does not create a desirable use as required in the finding. The city desires to bring non-conforming uses into conforming status. As existing, the Mobile Home Park is inconsistent with the general plan and zoning code established by Escalon Municipal Code, Chapter 17, as these governing documents do not allow mobile home parks in the R1 zone. The Planning Commission and/or city council may nonetheless make this finding if it believes, based on the record, that the expansion of the non-conforming use can further the economic, social, or environmental status of the city. B, that this use will be properly related to other uses, transportation facilities, and other public facilities in the area, and will not cause undue environmental impacts relating to noise, odor, pollution, et cetera. The Mobile Home Park appears to be related to other uses as it is located near a shopping center, a grocery store will soon be opening nearby, and Almond Grove is on the regular Etrans bus route. The Mobile Home Park does not appear to cause undue environmental impacts, and a sequo categorical exemption does apply. C is that the use will not adversely affect the health and safety, or health or safety of persons living or working in the vicinity, or be materially detrimental to the public welfare of the city and its residents. The Planning Commission identified several concerns related to this finding, including, one, the single ingress egress point for emergency services access to the project. For the Planning Commission meeting, Escalon Consolidated Fire Protection District relayed concerns about single ingress egress access point to the project, as well as expressing the need for additional information about water supply for onsite fire suppression. Staff was unable to receive a final response on this question from HCD prior to the Planning Commission meeting, but have since heard from HCD that this is the case. Further discussion between the fire department and HCD after the Planning Commission meeting resulted in the determination that the fire department is limited in requiring a single ingress egress point under state law. As such, the Fire Protection District has provided updated comments that, quote, "Converting the existing RV lot to living spaces does not provide a substantial impact to traffic flow or fire department access, thus eliminating any concerns we have about access." It should be noted, any future expansions beyond its current plat map would be considered a complete separate project and would require additional access road," end quote. Regarding the onsite fire suppression system, the project applicant provided documentation to the Fire Protection District that showed hydrant testing, compliant with HCD standards in 2017.
That's a yes. This one, that one, that one. This one, higher up, minimum.
Okay. Where was I? Let's see here. So, regarding onsite fire suppression system, the project applicant provided documentation to Fire Protection District that showed hydrant testing compliant with the HCD standards in 2017. Testing occurs every five years. The Fire Protection District retested the system on January 12, 2023, and found it in compliance. Two, privacy concerns for neighbors on Spring Drive. Based on the plans for the proposed project, the rear setback for the proposed units is five feet from the rear of the unit to the southern property line. Planning Commission expressed concern for the privacy of the residents in the homes along Spring Drive that back up to the proposed project area. Three, setbacks and density of the proposed manufactured housing units do not conform to the general plan and zoning code. The city has an interest in providing expansion of non-conforming uses that do not comply with current zoning and general plan standards. The setbacks in the R1 zone include a 20-foot rear setback, a five-foot side setback, and a 15- or 20-foot front yard setback, depending if a front porch is provided. So the public outreach on this item, this reviews all of the public noticing that we've done for the history of the project, and so we did send out an updated mail for this appeal, public hearing, and that was on January 10. The project transmittal was, there are comments received by other agencies and departments that are attached to the staff report, and all of their comments have been directly incorporated into the conditions of approval. Staff reviewed all the comments received from all agencies, and put together the following items to serve as the proposed conditions of approval if the project is approved. If approved, the city council should review the project and make modifications to the conditions of approval as needed. Recommendation is that the council conduct a public hearing and consider the appeal of the Planning Commission's decision to deny approval of the conditional use permit application 22-768, to add six additional manufactured housing units with associated parking spaces to an existing manufactured housing community. So we have the procedure listed to move forward, and also the proposed conditions of approval. Since this item was released to the public, we have received additional comments, which we provided copies up at the front door, and we also provided counsel with a copy of that letter. And if you wanted to review the specific conditions, the, we have standard conditions, which are listed towards the end, and those are typical general conditions that are applied to every project. The specific conditions listed would be if, if the council wanted to move forward on the item, we would need to modify that accordingly, and then there is an access agreement that was listed in there, that if the project were to be approved, that they would have the option to merge the two lots, or record an access and maintenance agreement for those parcels. If you have any questions of staff, please let us know. I know there's a lot of documents that are listed in there, included in this staff report. Is the letter from the project applicant dated from November 16, which is Exhibit A. Exhibit B is the staff report with exhibits from the Planning Commission meeting back in November. Exhibit C has additional documents that were submitted after the publication of the agenda that were presented at the November 15 Planning Commission meeting. We added number, letter D, which is the meeting minutes from the Planning Commission meeting, as those were approved. And E is all the public comment letters submitted for the appeal to city council, and then F is the draft sequo notice of exemption. If you have any questions, please.
None at this point, from me. Anybody else have any questions for staff at this point? Then I believe the next step is for the appellant to present on the appeal. Would step up and.
Did Andy have a question?
He hasn't yet, I have a question.
For the appellant to present the appeal?
Almond Grove Manufactured Housing Community, we have been in operation since the early 70s, providing affordable housing for 106 55-plus community. We've had a spot in the back that has been basically a boneyard, junkyard, some storage, and it hasn't been put to use. It's a little bit nicer. We thought, had this idea that we would add six units of housing and increase the affordable housing supply within the city. We've encountered a lot of opposition. Some may be founded, some may be unfounded. I'm here to parse through that with you folks. Here to also, if we, if there's some room for compromise, we're here at the table to say, we'd love to find a solution that works for the community, makes the community feel good, and provides the housing that's needed. Pretty basic on the three things. I think the biggest point of contention was a safety component going into the Planning Commission meeting that weighed very heavily on all of the commissioners' minds. There were unanswered questions as to the ingress egress, the safety, and how, what the overall impact would be to the community. I provided some feedback, obviously it wasn't something, it was my, my own personal feedback, but after the meeting, working with the fire department at length, we've now come to the conclusion, it sounds like both the city and us, the appellant, that there's not going to be a harm to the community in adding those six lots. It's conducive to the community itself. If you look at the layout, it's lined up perfectly for the remaining six lots. The issue that is, it seems to be the biggest stumbling block, is our zoning. I'd just like to remind everybody, we were zoned a mobile home park when we were built, we've been a mobile home park. Saying that, you know, adding a use of six units isn't conducive, is kind of like saying that you don't like the 106 units we already have, and they're not conducive to the neighborhood. We are a part of the fabric of the community with our 106 units, and adding those 5% more, it's, it's de minimis in terms of the increase in the scope of our project, going from 106 to 112. So I think we're still within the fabric of the community, and we're providing that housing now, and we're saying, if you're happy with that housing we're providing, we just want to provide six more units in that little plot of dirt that we have sitting back there that's going unused. That's about all I have, I'm here to answer your questions.
Council, questions?
Any questions?
Questions from you?
Might I point out one more thing I just remembered? The issue with Spring Drive, if you look at a map, this is, I dare use the word, well, I say, you know, people don't like, when you have something next to your backyard, you can obviously have concerns, you want to make sure that it's conducive for you. The Mobile Home Park was built and approved by the Escalon City Council before any of those houses. We're talking about 20 homes on Spring Drive currently back up to the Mobile Home Park. Another roughly 20 or 30 houses on, is it Davis or David Drive? Back up to the Mobile Home Park. All of those homes, for the last 50 years, haven't had an issue with the setbacks, haven't had an issue with the park, there haven't been a series of complaints, been, they've been a good neighbor. We're talking about the three lots on the end, and there was something said that they were two-story homes, they're not, they're one-story homes, that we back up to, and it's really only three. And right now, I understand why they might be concerned that something, that they might be getting a new neighbor, but they're looking at, like I said, the equivalent of a boneyard right now. And it's not like we're expanding the use on Spring Street. 90% of those houses already successfully back up to the Mobile Home Park and are good neighbors.
Andy, do you have a question?
No.
Do you have any questions, Belinda?
I just am curious about the setup of how these are designed to sit on the lots. And I see that we have put, or you have put a 10-foot setback on these mobile homes, but those that are lined up on that same back line there don't have that 10-foot setback. Is there a reason you didn't line them up to conform to the rest of the community there on that street, and use that setback? Or what was the reasoning behind that, and not lining them up with the rest of the homes?
It, oversight? It was not, when we drew those, within state law, how it typically works, you need to be five, you can be zero lot line in the front, five feet in the rear, five feet side to side, and you have no more than 75% lot coverage. As we place those homes, we're not pushing them back, we're actually going to be placing them, it depends if we're going to do a front entryway with a front porch, which I think we will, so we place them about three or four feet back from the street. We're going to, we're generally looking to bring in new homes and to keep the aesthetic of what we have. We're not looking to do anything new, reinvent the, reinvent anything. So we're going to keep in, in the general look of what's there on the rest of that street.
So as these measure out, right now, there's a 10-foot setback in the front, and then there would be a five foot in the back, and what you're saying is actually how they would sit on the lot, there wouldn't be that 10-foot setback, they'd be further to the front, meaning in the back, there would be more than the five-foot setback, is that correct?
Typically, you want to give people a bigger rear yard, and we can do that, absolutely.
I think that would be probably one of the concerns that you talk of, the neighbors that are behind there currently, with our existing setback rules, if they were to have new neighbors, they would expect, based on the code and everything, to be the 20-foot, just as their houses are X number of feet away from their fence line. And normally, when you move into new projects, you move towards trying to stay within your zoning, as well as your current setback requirements. So what can you do to maybe make that better?
I can, we can take that 10 feet, and we're going to cut it to three. So I can, we can definitely do that, because that was already the intention, I don't, I'm sorry that there was that lack of clarity there with that 10 feet, that wasn't drawn up to show the exact placement of the homes, it was meant to show it what a typical home could look like. The architect did that, we're going to be placing them three feet back. And some, we, three to, two to four feet back, let me say, we're going to keep them in line with those homes that are there as existing.
Is your intention to rent these units out, or you're selling the unit, then renting the dirt underneath? What is your plan for that? You mentioned wanting to provide affordable low-income housing, you mentioned that somewhere in there, and I'm just curious how that works.
The same, we're going to do the exact same thing as we've done with the, with the other 106. You have homeowners that rent the dirt. We're going to bring in new homes, we're going to market them for sale to new homeowners, and we're going to rent, rent the lot to them, provide their utilities.
So it's going to be similar to the rest of the units, okay?
Correct, 100%.
Would it also be possible if, they'd also be staggered, not square with the street, but line up with the homes that are already in line there? And that would be a possibility for you?
Yes.
It looks as a lot, 208, how it sits right now, it kind of corners off there, and that vehicle, it's, it's, gets thinner as you go, and if we staggered it this way, it would just line up, is that what you're seeing as well?
Yeah, I'm going to make a mea culpa, with my interactions with the Planning Commission, in that I was a little bit taken back, because when we typically have our mobile home parks more than just this one, and we add lots, jurisdictions want to see that affordable housing, and I was kind of surprised, like, the opposition, I felt, so I didn't handle it appropriately, and I kind of became a little stick in the mud. I would very much say that we're here to get something done in conformance with what makes you folks happy. So if that's four lots instead of six lots, if you want them to be slightly bigger, and you want them at an angle, not a problem. Obviously, we'd prefer to hit the six, if you're good with it, but we'll figure out a way to make it work, and we want everybody to be happy.
What does that set precedent for us with setbacks?
Yeah, so because it's a mobile home park, you're, you're sort of in a special realm of the law. So, as you mentioned, with the setbacks in particular, the reason we would be able to, for example, change it so that we push it up to three front, three feet in the front, and then add that back onto the back, is because HCD says that that's okay in terms of setbacks. The 10 feet, you know, was maybe something in staff communications that was initially preferred, or just the way the architect drew it up. But all these things that we're discussing can become conditions in this conditional use permit, which is specific to this site only, and so it doesn't leave you in a bad position for future projects to change your setback requirements, for CUPs to impose different conditions. So whatever we do tonight, we'll run with this site. You'll have that conditional use permit for the rest of the use of the site as a mobile home park, but we can certainly, you know, what, what we would do is add these conditions in, and we could even take action tonight, subject to staff going back. in, and we could even take action tonight, subject to staff going back, working with the applicant, to finalize those conditions and bring it back for your, for your approval. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out if that's, if somebody's building houses, and they want to be five foot from a back fence line. Does that open us up to that problem? I know it's not a mobile home, but it's, it's, you're setting a precedent of allowing a house, or a unit, we'll call it a mobile home, whatever you want to call it, it's a house, someone's living in there, and you're that close to the back fence line.
Yeah, I understand your concern. I think what will come into play in the future is, you know, are you looking at R1 or a different kind of zone? Are you looking at a mobile home park, which is what HCD specifically regulates? Or are you looking at a standalone mobile home unit, which the city has more control over? So I, I totally understand your concern, but I think you won't have trouble in the future, when a different project comes up, finding the, the hook to differentiate the project, because you might be in a different zone, you might be looking at it for.
I'm just thinking, R1 to R1 and the rest of the town, we have open dirt currently that's R1, and I want to know if this is going to be a problem for future development, that someone's going to say, we've done it here, even though it's a mobile home park, but we've allowed it, and where does that put us in, you know, in the future? So I'm concerned with that.
Yeah, for future R1 development, you would just look to your standard municipal code section. So as we've discussed here, the, these setback requirements are not what's in the R1 zone, because we have to do the state law thing. So in a future R1 development, what you would do is tell that applicant, we're, we're in municipal code world, that's the standards that are going to apply, maybe you can seek a variance, but again, that's a case-by-case thing. They would come to the Planning Commission, they would seek a variance if they weren't happy with the setback requirements, and the Planning Commission could choose to grant or deny that variance at that time. But we're, we're right back after this project to looking at the municipal code standards. It's a special case, because it is a non-conforming use currently that requires a CUP, and so that's why we kind of have this weird tension between the state law and the local requirements, but it wouldn't put you in a bad position for future developments.
Okay. What are your current park regulations on carports? How wide and how long is there a requirement for that?
Well, without getting into the weeds too much, the state of California regulates it. So we can regulate it to the extent through our rules and regulations. We generally prefer carports, 10 feet, 30 feet long, that's the standard. They're a pre-assembled, or a pre-built, and they come on-site pre-built. So the, and the standard's 10 by 30.
Okay.
Are they, are they required by the homeowner or tenant?
When we install, when we install these new homes, we're going to install them with the carports on these lots.
And then, that's a fire road as well, that is being installed, a fire road for fire access, that turnaround point there, that little drive? Is that what that is?
Correct.
And that's not meant to park on, or?
No, no, that's the, that's the, basically the big driveway to get to the homes.
And so lot 212 doesn't really have any street frontage, it just goes up to 212?
Correct.
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 Any questions, Mr. Tatum?
No, I think you guys have answered them pretty thoroughly.
One more question?
All right, it's time.
All right, then I guess we can move it to the next phase of this, to the public comments. Be on the audience or online that would like to speak to this. It's a open public hearing, five minutes per speaker, so please come up and let us know your thoughts.
Good evening.
Evening.
I'm a resident of Almond Grove. I looked it up, the state regulations for HD, or HCD states that they cannot put it in there, because it infringes on parking. The state code says, under chapter 25, or title 25, chapter 2, Mobile Home Parks Installation Regulation states that the locations and distances between units, accessory buildings and structures, or other building improvements on the affected lots, such as patios or parking areas, within 10 feet of the current proposed lot lines. According to the agreement that we all signed as renters, one of the amenities mentioned in the park is RV storage, and that's what that area was, until they told everybody to have to move their RVs out of there, so they could measure it and lay it out, lay out the lots. So, that's all I have to say. Anything else you want to look at these? I printed them out.
If you've got an extra set to share, we can take them.
I don't have an extra set, but I can get an extra set, no, no time at all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Patrick Wallach from 2340 Spring Drive, on the southern property of the proposed build. So, again, we've talked about the setback requirements, and I will just reiterate that it currently is an R1 zone. I mean, when I, I did have the chance to attend the November Planning Commission meeting and express my concerns at that time, and I do recall at the beginning of the meeting that there was no records of how this agreement was forged for the mobile park home to come into this space, but the reality is now that it's an R1 zone. So, you know, I heard comments about the harmony of us living together and whatnot, but, you know, the fact remains that it currently is an R1. The proposed setbacks are five feet, where the minimum should be 20. And I did want to highlight the privacy concerns for me, so I didn't, I was confused or anything like that about a two-story structure. It was the maximum height of 20 feet, so that was my biggest concern, because with that minimal, minimal setback, a potential height of 20 feet would be kind of looking into our yard, and so that was my personal privacy concern there. And so, you know, whatever the decision may be, I would like to have that addressed. But I'm here to formally request that the council reject this appeal, because I will note that this was formally denied by the Planning Commission. These are officials appointed by the city council. So my perception is that the council appoints them to make decisions on the planning of the city, and the council trusts their decision. So I guess my biggest concerns are, like, if we were to pass this appeal, it might set a precedent, you know, for maybe even a lack of concern for the voices of the citizens and the council-appointed committee that makes these decisions. So, you know, again, I respect your decision that you make today, but I appreciate you addressing my concerns and hearing my formal appeal, or formal appeal for your rejection of this appeal, if you catch my drift. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kurt Danziger, 389, I know you, I wasn't going to talk on this tonight, but my personal career was in fire life safety with the City Mountain View Fire Department. I collected all of the data for every fire suppression system in the city. And so I had a concern today, I thought, I go out there and take a look at those hydrants. There was a concern with the fire department thought maybe a well system versus what the applicant here says is city water. So I haven't seen any proof, one way or the other, what that system is hooked to. That's number one. Number two, I took a picture of the rear hydrant, there's two hydrants on site. Hydrants are replaced after 50 years. The one on, in the front is 48 years old, replaced in two years, the one in the back is 57. So I'm thinking, who's testing this, and not making any recommendations here about it? When you test the fire hydrant, you have to know what the, the water per minute flow is through there, the initial flow, that's what was approved by an engineer when these things go in, and that's done with a PTO valve test, that's what you should see when they're supplying this data. And then over the years, every five years, when they run the test again, you have to be within a certain percentage of that flow, or corrections have to be made to the, to the system to increase that flow. Because as you add to it, you decrease the pressure. So you don't have enough information, is what I'm saying, with regard to that, the fire suppression system. As a former member of the Planning Commission, I would strongly urge you to go look at that YouTube of the meetings and read these, these notes here. The Planning Commission really bent over backwards to help make this thing work. This is a conditional use permit, so there are conditions, as the city attorney will point out, that the city can levy on this. As a personal thought, that area in the back that used to be RV storage, at $10 per month for the tenants, which was increased to 75, and that's why there's so few there now, if you don't have a second way out, there's at least a staging area. Somebody brought it up tonight, what do you do in an emergency? You know, what's, what's open, chief? Is it the, the community center, it's the library? You got an area in the back there where people could evacuate and shelter in place, you know, in the event that there is a fire and they can't get out. What you don't see in these pictures right here are all the cars that are parked in the street. That's a very nice, clean map there, but as I drove down there today, you know, there's 20 cars on each of these streets there, and how many cars are going to be parked in front now, when you have a three-foot setback? So, I don't want to take up your five minutes, but I, I would strongly suggest you, you think about what the Planning Commission has said prior to, and if, if the applicant is willing to change his position, maybe you send it back to him.
Thank you.
Is that something we can do, send it back to Planning?
You will make a decision tonight. It, it will, your decision tonight is final, so you can make a recommendation that Planning Commission pick this up again as a volunteer, but whatever you decide tonight, if you decide no, then Planning Commission's decision stands. If you decide to overturn the decision, then you've made a final decision in that sense. So it doesn't go back to Planning Commission in a, in a traditional sense.
Okay.
I'm John Griffin, I work with Harmony Community, I'm a general contractor. I'm the one that had all the drawings done and, and all that. On the drawings, you'll see that there's fire lines, so that people can't park in that one area. And then the other thing, too, is that I, because we're putting a gate in, an automatic gate in, I've been meeting regularly with the fire department to make sure that the gate is to all the standards, and they're all happy with the way that they can get in and out of the park. We talked about the fire hydrants, and we talked about the water flow and all that kind of stuff. And that is on city water, I explained to where, I explained to the battalion chief where we had to turn water off for the park and that type of stuff. He says, oh yeah, it's definitely city water. We've currently had a fire test done, and it met all the standards. As far as the fire hydrants go, I had mentioned that to the battalion chief, and he said, yeah, I'm not quite sure why they're so old, if we're the ones running the test, he says, but we'll look into it. So that's the only thing I can say about the fire hydrants and the battalion chief, and his and I conversation out there as we were going through all this. Just wanted to make that clear.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Phyllis Golea, and I'm here to support my friends and leaders of a food distribution ministry that reside in this park and the elderly. I also once lived in one of these mobile home parks, and I can tell you that sometimes when they're owned by corporations, it's nothing about, but about greed, honestly. As far as it being in support of economical ways for the elderly to live, sure they begin that way, we know when it was paddocks matter, they only paid $300 a month. The rent has now gone up, I know for one person, over $297 in two years. When people are on fixed incomes, it doesn't work that way, it just, it can't, it can't go on like that, and it's going to go up $80, $80, or whatever, how much they're going to do. And if they do any major improvements, then they can increase it even more. So as far as them providing housing for seniors, when they were proposed to, to make it a senior housing only, they absolutely declined that. I'm glad to hear that they said they'd be willing to do only four units instead of six, because that's awfully crowded there. As far as the safety going in, there's only one gate going in and out, we know that, and so coming in and out, they're seniors, first of all, getting seniors in and out of housing for like, for getting out of safety, that's one concern, and then the main road, you know, is 120. So we're always concerned about that. You know, you've got one gate going in and out, so it's just, it doesn't sound reasonable to me. I understand that they did appeal it with the R1 zoning, no matter what it is, trailer park or whatever, it's still R1, right? And that's what the Planning Commission did it. I just don't think it's safe that way. Beside the safety, the privacy, as the neighbors have stated, that it's, the rental increases that have gone up, the new tenants will be charged 895, as I understand. I'm not, it'll speak exactly on what they're paying everybody on their amounts, but they've gone up significantly and will continue, as I understand, they were paying 300 until they reached the goal of $700 a month. Okay, and they've signed some kind of an agreement. And they're on fixed incomes, and they just simply can't afford this kind of stuff. So when Matt Davis was asked if he was willing to reduce or make it a senior home, absolutely refused. Well, why not? Because we can get anybody in there. Well, as far as them providing $895 a month, they're going to bring these homes in, right? Well, they're saying they're not going to make any money on them. Well, I find that hard to believe. They're going to charge interest on these, then they're going to have a $900 payment on a house, and an $800 payment on a rental, on the rent on a land, plus their utilities, and water and garbage and everything else. How, how can a senior, you know, really afford that, on that? So I, I'm not in agreement with that. We're a small town with small-town values. We want to provide for our seniors, we want to be a blessing to them, we want, we don't want to sacrifice our ethics or our safety over corporate and private greed. That's my foundation on this. I don't think we should sacrifice these things. I think personally and perceived, that's what happened in here. I don't want to see that come into our town, our elderly is important, we need to provide affordable housing, I know it's expensive everywhere these days, and I think this corporation's going to make a lot of money on that, and I just don't think it's good. I, I just, I don't, I'm not in agreement with it. I think that maybe that's not the type of business, I think they're just not a good fit for Escalon. And that's my personal opinion on it, and I would like to think a lot of the community may feel that as well. So I'm in complete opposition of what's going on here, it's a lot of crowding, and I'm just sticking up for them. And also, we were delivering food there, to deliver it to the, to the, to the recreation room, and now they don't even have management. We can't even get management there so we can supply food and stuff to the elderly there. So that's another concern. We can't deliver it, because there's no soliciting, we can't take it door-to-door to them, so they don't even have management there, so we can supply that to them. So that's all I have to say. Thank you very much for hearing me, and welcome, everybody.
May I ask a question of legal at this point? I know that single-family resident rental is held to an increase of 10% per year for their rental rates. Is that the same on the land for these units?
The financial parts of the mobile home park are regulated by the state, so I would assume, because he seems to be knowledgeable about the state regulation of the mobile home park, that what he's doing in terms of the rent and the sale of the mobile homes themselves is in accordance with the state standards. So that's not, it's not an area where the city will really be able to step in and provide any kind of rental control, because it's just an area where the state has said, we've got this covered, and the locality doesn't have any control there. If she would like to speak again, she's welcome to.
If you'd like to.
Any more comments out there?
Address that.
I just looked up a line that says, no state law does not regulate the amount of rent increases in a mobile home park.
Right, so, but the city doesn't either?
The city doesn't either, so they can't really regulate, so they can do pretty much. I thought it was 3%. You're right.
For a single-family resident, it's 10% per year, from what I understand, from my understanding of how that works, and then that way you can kind of expect what you could expect. I, and what she's saying is that that is not the same as those units that are in a mobile home park. Right.
And the applicant probably knows the most up-to-date information on this, so if you'd like to allow.
Yeah, we're just trying to get this to prep.
There.
I, I did hear one thing, that you guys are in need of affordable housing, so we do provide 106, we will provide a few more if you want them. As far as the rents, we generally, well, not even generally, when we took over, we put in a rental subsidy for any resident who was housing burdened, according to HUD, over 40% of their gross going towards their rent. We had five or six people apply, they all got the subsidy. We will provide any subsidy needed and have any discussions with anybody if they're housing burdened. We're going to make sure that we create stability within the community, and we have been doing that. As far as the rents, last rent increase was about, it was less than 10%. Last year's, I think this one coming up is in the range of about 6% or 7%. We did take one large rent increase after we took over, that was heavily related to the property taxes, which went up by, I don't know, close to, I want to say, close to about $60, $70,000. That was a bigger bite the paddocks didn't have to take, as you know, things get reassessed on turnover, so we took a big jump on that first year. We've been now going on our third year. Those increases are generally Those increases are generally in line. We put everybody on a five-year plan. We gave, we had multiple outreach meetings three years ago. If there are issues, we'll, we'll sit down and talk with anybody anyhow. I don't think the focus of this is rents, but we're here to be a good, long-term member of the community. And as far as the last thing, you have those rules in front of you that gentleman handed you that says that we're a senior community. And what the, the planning commission, I didn't understand last time, the, maybe I missed it. They said, will you commit to being a senior housing community? I said, but we already are a senior housing community. And they said, will you commit to that in terms of a deed restriction? I said, we're not going to hem ourselves in, you know, 20 or 30 years from now. I don't know what is, what the market's going to be. I mean, there are a lot of communities, like Ucaipa, for example, locked in all their senior housing communities, and they're running a 40% vacancy, and their families can't live in their largest supply of housing. I want to make sure that we have flexibility, but it's our stated goals. We told all the residents, and we sat down the multiple meetings. We're staying a senior community. That's our intention for the long haul while the economics support it. And that would be a discussion that we would have down the line. If we're 20, 30% vacant, it would obviously make sense not to let those places sit vacant, but provide that housing to the community. We're not vacant, we're full.
Would you consider modifying the Almond Grove signage to reflect that it is a senior housing community?
Sure. Absolutely.
We're still open to the public right now. Is there anybody else who would like to speak on this item?
I want to comment, Ann Chatteck, I just want to comment about this discussion about working together. And when they first sent the rental increases, I personally called, asked, and talked with you and said, can we, is there something we could do to make it easier? Can we stretch it over seven years instead of five years? Or is there something? And I got, without any discussion, absolutely no. So tell me where the partnership is. Tell me where you are so in favor of supporting our seniors in Escalon.
If I can make one point of clarification, the resident who spoke from the audience is actually correct. It's not within the area of state control to regulate the rents in a mobile home park. And so what that would entail, though, is the city passing an ordinance separately from the single-family applicable ordinance that regulates specifically mobile home park rent control, rent stabilization.
We would not do that tonight.
Not tonight. But that's an option that is available to the city.
Okay, and, and regulate mobile housing communities in the future?
Yes.
And would that apply to this one, or is this one would be grandfathered in under the old regulations?
It would apply going forward.
Okay.
Yes.
Any more public comment out there at this time?
Danny Fox, I have no idea who wrote this. It's because a brief synopsis of what, of the planning commission meeting originally. Get a copy of it?
Yes.
Sounds like that they know what they're talking about. They were there, and they're going to be personally involved. There were some things in there that they originally proposed, and this person that wrote it says that they, the owner deliberately tried to deceive the planning commission with inaccurate map, and they corrected that. So whoever wrote this, I think they're sending a good message. If you haven't read it, I don't know who read it. Were you all to do this? You can't.
It was submitted today during business hours, so we ran a copy and put it up at the front.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the public before we close the hearing?
A question for the public, Department of Public Works. What's the size of, of the water pipe serving the area?
The water main going in there? I have to double check, but I'm pretty sure it's a six-inch. It's either six or eight.
The last time I checked, I think it was four, maybe five.
Yeah, we just had some upgrades in that area.
Right, up to date, because 30-something years ago, it was four.
And that's just on, and that's just on, it's definitely not four now. It's either six, right, for sure, but I'll get into it, look at you. But that's just on David. That's, we didn't do any piping into the mobile home park, and that old plumbing's still the same.
No, that's the old plumbing. It's about close to 60 years old, and it's got to be replaced to bring up to equal the pressure. From that, if you have those two fire hydrants opened up, it's going to drain everything out. That's the only thing I got, kind of concerns me, to maintain the pressure on those fire hydrants.
Anybody else from the public before we close the public portion of this? Seeing none, we're going to close the public comment section. I guess at this point, the appellant can present any rebuttal if they so choose to anything that's already been said at this point. If you have any further comments, you are welcome to take the podium and add to whatever you've said at this point. You're good? Okay?
Any questions for me?
Do you have questions?
I know. Would you be possible, would you possibly consider putting in some sort of gate there behind lots 212, 213 to use in some sort of emergency situation? It wouldn't be an open, it would just open in an emergency. That's behind, 212 and 213 are the two that are in that back corner there and where that dirt lot is.
That goes out to the field, yeah.
It does go out to the field there.
It goes to the paddocks.
The paddocks. And it wouldn't be, you know, just as a safety feature in the event of a fire or flood types of things.
We've, we've also, we've got the big area around the clubhouse, all the grass, and we've got a good meeting area there. I should have mentioned that, if that matters. But yes, we would add gates on the back corner.
It was our pleasure. We have any more questions for this gentleman here as far as what we would like to do at this point?
I don't have any. If you have any questions, make a motion or?
If there's no more deliberation, then yeah, according to my rules here of what we're supposed to do, we're supposed to make a motion considering this appeal, should we want to?
I'll, I'll make a motion.
Okay, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion that the planning commission's ruling stands.
We have a motion on the table. Do we have a second?
A second.
So you have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 opposed? Say, motion 3-0? Should we get the other council members back in?
I almost forgot about this.
Yes, sir.
I have to apologize. I forgot to introduce myself when I stepped up to speak, Robert Woodward.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
You're welcome.
I thought he gave us the rental agreement.
He gave us the notice there that we look at. All right, everybody, we got everybody back here, so we're going to move on to item number eight on the agenda. Staff?
Thank you, Mayor. So this item before you is conducting a public hearing and approving the resolution, adopting your report, requesting the placement of special assessments on the property tax rolls for recovery of code enforcement abatement costs as set forth in the Escalon Municipal Code for the property located at 2030 Main Street Escalon. This property has been through code enforcement processes that began in February 2020 up till September of 2022. In the staff report is a listing of the following abatement processes that were followed, and the items that were observed regarding health and safety violations that are listed in the staff report, as well as a timeline. The total cost for the abatement process is explained in the attached Exhibit A report of costs, a total of $10,880.35. Therefore, staff is recommending that you approve the resolution, adopting the request for placement on the special assessment for the property tax recovery of this item so that the city could be reimbursed for the expenses. If you have any questions on this item, we'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions up here?
I have a plethora of questions, Mr. Mayor.
What do you got for us?
Well, Councilman Walker spoke first, so.
Yeah, I see that the first movement here in the background is on 213, 2020, and the city initiated code enforcement. What prompted the city to initiate the code enforcement case?
We received a complaint on the property.
Okay. Like from a citizen?
Yes. I just want to make sure that was okay to release in the public. But yes, we did receive a complaint, and so staff followed up on that complaint, and this is where it led us.
So in my review of this item, I believe that this is an exact repeat of what was brought to City Council in July and August 2022, a similar issue at 2128 Franklin Street. And at, well, first of all, before I continue with any other questions, is the property owner in the audience tonight?
Good morning, I'm Anthony, or good evening, I'm Anthony Gonzalez, the attorney retained by the property owners.
Okay. So staff, in August, when the issue at 2128 Franklin Street was brought up, one of the requests by council at that time was to provide the, the, a similar, the similar situation, a breakdown in the attorney hours. Similar to that, did we provide a breakdown in the 31.4 hours for this particular situation?
I'm not aware of them requesting that for this item, but if it were to be requested, we would give them the breakdown on that.
Okay.
And that does come directly from legal counsel, and so they follow up with putting that together and providing it to the property owner.
Why were there two issues, or two separate notices of, notices to abate issued? Because if you look at the timeline, the very first item that was brought up was that the city, well, an inspection was done on the property 225, 2020, and then on that inspection was scheduled, and the, the property owner was made aware of some of the issues. And Courtney, can you scroll down a little bit, please? And so we have the list of all of the issues. And then, keep going, sorry. Okay, so then, from that list of issues, we issued a notice in order to abate in March of, March 19th, 2020. Well, then, it seemed to me like from that point moving forward, the property owners working out, working on an application, and they're working through things, and then later on, then we issued another notice in order to abate. So what was the purpose between the double notice and an order to abate?
So typically, we provide a second or third notice when we're not receiving anything in response back to addressing the concerns, and so code enforcement moves forward. So in this case, you're going through the timeline, and they're submitting construction plans, scopes of work, building permit applications, but they were actually doing that on a separate item. They wanted to add an ADU to the property. And so at this time, we were advising them, you still have an active code enforcement complaint that needs to be addressed. So you're trying to apply for one, a different building permit, but you're not addressing the issues that are already, that are existing and moving forward. And so we always want to move forward with voluntary abatement, and so we put out several notices, first notice, second notice, third notice, final notice. Depending on progress, a number of factors come into play, and so we, we keep putting it out there to correct the situation. And so a duplicate notice was probably submitted out because even though things were being done on the side and we were advising them, you have an active code enforcement complaint on this property. We can't stop building permit applications because there's active code enforcement. We can only tell them, you have to address this, too. So this process is continuing to move forward while they're trying to move with a different process.
Okay.
Or a separate process, I should say.
In review of this timeline, similar to the situation of Franklin Street, all of this was happening during the pandemic. And I know from my own personal experience that anything related to building and construction and design, et cetera, et cetera, anything related to the building and construction industry during the pandemic was problematic at best. Further, it was very difficult to try to get, I mean, to get people to show up to do any work or to prepare a design, et cetera, et cetera. Where I personally have heartburn, I mean, I, I followed the breakdown in costs. I can see staff time. I can see code enforcement. I can see Justin. I can see everybody, and it makes sense to me. But where I personally have heartburn is the 31.4 hours of attorney time on these issues of notices to abate, when, I mean, it seems to me, based off this timeline that was presented, that the homeowner was at least working, and maybe they're, they were out in left field talking about the ADU, and at the same time, trying to address the issues inside the, the main property. But, and I understand that the municipal code section, or Section 8 tells us that the city is responsible to recoup the attorney fees. But Courtney, can you go to the breakdown, please? Sorry, keep going.
220.
Try to get there, too. There we go. So, public work staff, three-quarters of an hour. PD staff, half an hour. Building department staff, three and a half hours. Admin staff, and I understand a lot of back and forth, eight and a half hours. But 31.4 hours of attorney office staff time, in my opinion, is a bit to swallow because if, if we don't have this breakdown, I guess if I were to make a decision on this tonight, I would want to be able to see a further breakdown of what this 31.4 hours is before I can make a decision.
So just to remind you, those charges are from February 2020 to September 2022, so that's 30 hours in that two-year, two and a half-year time period.
Okay.
Notice of abatements are typically handled by staff, so that eight and a half hours Notice of abatements are typically handled by staff, so that eight and a half hours includes us putting those together. We do have legal counsel review them. I would, and it's been a while since I've looked at them, because I do, I'm the one that does review the billing on those items. That is their assistance provided to us, and then helping with other issues. This property, it's two and a half years, and we did enter into an agreement to help repair everything, to get them into compliance, so that agreement had a timeline, which they were meeting or trying to meet to address the issues, but there was still legal counsel time with making sure they reviewed those timelines, because in the event that they did not meet the timeline, we were reaching out with legal counsel to make sure that we're providing the warning and/or, remember, you're out of compliance with your agreement. Can you please advise, you know, it's process, it's a lot of back and forthness, so it's over the two and a half years, but I'd be happy to provide that information. But I wanted to make sure it was clear that it's over a two and a half year period for the 30 hours.
I totally agree. Where I have an issue is the $9,800 is a pretty significant chunk of change to swallow in 10 days, because down here on the bottom of the notice, it says, failure to tender the abatement costs in 10 days may result in a special assessment placed on the property. And I understand that the property owner has been working on this issue over the last two years, it's just 31.4 hours for attorney fees dumbfounds me.
So we are open and flexible on providing payment arrangements in the event that they're interested in doing so.
Mr. Mayor, is it appropriate for me to speak, or do you want me to, are you still...
Depends on the number of questions Mr. Strowman here has. Councilman Strowman?
I have no questions. I'll let you know if I do.
So yes, go ahead.
Once again, my name is Anthony Gonzalez, I'm attorney for Gabriel Albor, who is managing the property now. His uncle, Antonio, is the name on the title, but the nephew, who's a realtor and property developer, has taken over his properties here at Escalon. I'm here to address a couple of issues, some of which Councilman Strowman have already addressed, but really, I'm here today to ask for a continuance on this matter, with, it would not prejudice the city of Escalon at all, because if you notice on that timeline, a notice of this hearing was sent out on the 6th of January, it was mailed to an address, the subject address, which is a rental house, not the address of the owner, and so they didn't get this notice until last Thursday. They hired me on Friday, Monday is a holiday, and here I am tonight without the ability to read any of those documents you just showed up there. And I think that we need to be able to review those documents and try to negotiate a settlement with city staff prior to coming to the city council to place a lien on the property without an opportunity to try to resolve this matter in six days.
That would be fine. If that's council's direction, we don't have a problem doing that. We do mail out the address that's listed on the property tax assessor, the most recent rule, and so that's the address we're utilizing, that's listed as property owner.
Please understand that that goes to a renter who holds on to it for a period of time, and so everything that they've received, they've received late, because they don't normally go to their rental house.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question?
Yes.
Can you repeat who your client is, sir?
Yes, I represent Gabriel Albor, Antonio Albor.
Okay. If my memory serves me, correct me, aren't they the same property owners?
They are.
Same property?
They are, and I am in talks with, have been in communication with both Ms. Romo and the city attorney to some extent, on trying to come to a resolution on that issue as well. And to be frank, there's a third property there in the process of rehabbing at this time, that has been red-tagged by the city, even though they're in the process of rehabbing it, and they're afraid it's going to end up in this very same situation in a very short period of time. So I was hired to try to come to some agreement with the city of Escalon to keep this rotating wheel of a young entrepreneur who's trying to fix properties that belonged in his family a long time, from getting 30, in that case, there's a $30,000 fee with, I don't know, $18,000 in attorney's costs, even though the property's been repaired. And so there's questions as to why attorney's fees kept continuing after repairs have begun, but that's a different issue, we're not on that tonight.
Yeah, please, that's not what we're here for.
So, what I'm asking is if you can continue this matter for 30 or 60 days, so I can get the documents that you just showed up here, review them with my client, and then talk to your staff about trying to come to some resolution on this matter, prior to the city council considering a lien, and we're giving it more than six days' notice, hopefully for my client to be prepared to respond.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, we forgot to open the public hearing to discuss this item with this.
Not just that we're not there yet, but...
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
First, for the city manager, does this sound like a reasonable timeframe to you, 30 days to kind of get on the same, see if you can get on the same page with them?
Sure, that would be fine.
Okay, just kidding.
Yeah, we typically have to submit to the county for property tax by the first week in August, and so we're moving forward on this one, because we need to move that forward, because we'll have other items coming forward, like the LLDs, BADs, and those are all a part of going on the assessment, and so we're trying to make sure we get them all addressed, so this one was ready to move forward, so.
Thank you. Any other questions up here before we open up to the public?
All right, then...
For the city manager, just to clarify, so the attorney-staff time, what we're saying is the notice of abatement was created by the administrative staff, and then the attorneys check over those and review them, and so it takes about eight and a half hours to construct them, then 31.4 to review.
They also drafted the agreement that the property owner entered into to rehabilitate the process, or the property, and so that goes through extensive review, and as well as, you know, assisting to help us, depending on what issues were arising, where we felt that legal counsel needed to make that call. These properties, at one point, you know, were all significantly obviously issues, and so we're trying to move forward with them as quickly as we can. However, we don't have a code enforcement officer or somebody that is trained in that area, and so we rely on legal counsel to make sure that anything we're putting out into the public or sending to a property owner, especially when it's in accordance with, you know, housing and tenants living in the house and those type of things, is correct before we're releasing that information, so.
You have the attorney doing the job of what a code enforcement officer would be doing, should we have had one.
I would say a portion of them, because that's what our legal counsel is for, is to review things and make sure that they're accurate before they're submitted or released out, and so I would say it may be a portion of them, but we would still run things through legal counsel, that's what they're there for, so. And then that's why it's written into the code, that if we have to go through that process, that the municipal codes allows us to come back and require that we get paid back for those outstanding costs, and so these costs that are listed on here are the costs accrued by the city, and so in the event that they're not reimbursed, you know, it's pooling out of other monies that the city has, so.
Are we making homeowners, or when situations like this arise, are we giving them a status update along the way, saying, hey, by the way, so far, there's $5,000 in attorney fees, just letting you know, oh, $7,500, or is it just at the end, when everything's settled and the building permit's signed off, oh, by the way, here's the bill?
At the end, I mean, every notice of abatement typically has that language in there, that any costs incurred by the city, you know, can be submitted to be reimbursed. And so, in the past, this one's been longstanding, and so we just keep, there hasn't been a process where we've had to, that the municipal code doesn't require it in that fashion, and so it hasn't been done that way. And so this item was ready to close out and move forward, because the items have been addressed, and so this is the last standing bill over those two years.
Any other questions before we open up to the public? And then we're going to open it up to the public, if they would like to speak on this item.
Anthony Gonzalez, for the property owners again. I would just like to say two things. One is, it should be, I want to make it apparent to the city of Escalon, that the young man who was taking over the property for his grandfather is sincere about getting these properties fixed and habitable, that's why he hired me. If he didn't care, he wouldn't have hired me. Number two is about, and I would encourage your city attorney to consider talking to your staff about requirements of due process and notification before property is apparently, you know, desired by the government. My client had no notice of how much bills were, how much attorney's fees were, and were given really no notice of any significance for the hearing that a lien's going to be placed on his house, when he thought he was being cooperative, working cooperatively with the city of Escalon. My client does not take issue with the fact that he owes some fees, but the staggering amount of the attorney's fees is a real issue, and I think it's something that the city council probably needs to explore about in the, for the future, because if you want your tenants to repair homes that are falling apart, I don't know, an average homeowner who's trying to fix a house, become habitable, is going to be able to afford a $10,000, $20,000, $30,000 attorney's fee, that's going to discourage them from fixing it, which is, you know, an insatiable, anyway. So that's all I really have to say, is I'm asking just for the continuance, so we can get to the bottom of this. My client does want to resolve the matter with the city of Escalon, without having a lien affixed to the property. Other than that, I open for questions, if you have any.
Okay. Well, let's let anybody up in the public that would like to speak on this topic, if they so chose, public hearing is open. Anybody? Anybody online? Okay, then we're going to close the public comment section on this and bring it back to council. What is our pleasure here?
I'd like to make a motion, if I can.
You may.
To respect the idea of the continuance, give them a little bit more time to look into this, as well as allow us to look into it as well. I don't know what time you guys would be comfortable with, but I would say 30 to 60 days seems pretty reasonable. So, 60 days puts us with more than March.
I look at it in meeting dates, so we're on the 17th.
What I will say is, if there's a voluntary agreement between, maybe the direction that the council is to reach, if possible, a voluntary agreement, and only bring this back to council if the need arises to have the applicant, the property owner, come back before council, so we could tentatively, you know, you could just direct staff to aim for a 30 to 60 day timeline to work with a voluntary agreement with the project owner, but, and then we could set a date to come back to council if we needed to later.
So you hit the 30-day mark in the last, almost last week of February, around the 2021, and so we can schedule for a meeting in March, that way we have a set meeting date that it would be ready for. The meeting, the March dates for meetings are Monday, March 6th, or Monday, March 20th?
I'd make a motion that we give until the 20th, and if something comes up between you where you come to a resolution, then we don't see it.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, before we move forward with your motion, may I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
I hate to do this, but this is to the property owners, legal counsel, when did your client take over the property? Or when did they purchase the property?
Well, it hasn't, the title hasn't been changed, it's still in the name of his uncle, uncle, grandfather. It's his senior male relative, I forget if it's his grandfather, it's his uncle, Antonio, but the young man is purchasing it, he's rehabbing it, and I think it might be for the intention of him, you know, taking it over in his own name, but that the purchase has not, transfer has not occurred as of yet. But the young man, that has hired me, who is in real estate and a developer, is the one who's financing getting them fixed and habitable.
Okay.
I can't answer you when he took it over.
But the title hasn't been recorded yet.
No.
Okay.
How long has his uncle had the property? How long has the elder...
I can't answer that question, I don't know. I don't know.
Coming back, we have a motion on the table.
I'll second the motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries four to one. All right. Next up, item number nine, receive AB 1600 fee report for fiscal year 2122.
Good evening. The item I have before you, it's related to the AB 1600, also known as the Development Impact Fee Mitigation Fee Act. It's required or recommended that council conduct a public hearing and receives comments regarding the fiscal year 2021-22 annual report of these fees. Here's the background, it's the California Government Code, Section 66000 through 66008, commonly referred to as AB 1600, requires that local agency collect fees from developers as a condition of development, hold a public hearing on an annual basis to report the amount of fees collected and expenditures made from these funds. The report was completed and made available to the public on December 14, 2022. Meeting requires the report to be available to the public at least 15 days prior to city council meetings. It provides specific information regarding the types of development fees, their amounts, purposes, balances, interest earned for each and current and ongoing improvements funded by the various fees. The fees referenced in the reports are development fees only, not user fees, they are one-time fees assessed to new development. In accordance with California State Annual Reporting requirements, staff has prepared the following exhibits. Exhibit A briefly goes over the different various development impact funds, and the description is listed there for you to review. There's Exhibit B, it's a detailed Excel spreadsheet that goes over the various funds and the total income that was collected for each of the funds, the interest earned, and how it was expensed, so it goes over the various projects that was spent in these various funds. It also goes over the fund balance, as well as the inter-fund loan that was loaned to other funds. Also in Exhibit B, you have the development impact fees associated with the different developments, so each year, there's a 2.74% annual increase. And in Exhibit C, it goes over the various project that was utilized for the different various funds. As you can see, Project 236 in 2122, $428,000 was used for bathroom replacement in Hogan This concludes the presentation. If you guys have any questions, please feel free to ask.
Anybody up here with any questions with this information item?
Can that be rotated, so that we can have better visibility, please?
I don't think it lets me rotate it.
You have to do it like four times.
No, that too, but if you right-click it, and then you can...
Little arrows.
Yeah.
It always gives me that.
Go down to the bottom.
With the 370.
Rotate view clockwise, and you're just gonna, yeah.
Thank you.
I did it.
Which page did you want to look at?
If we could just scroll back through, the last, I believe it was four to five pages, I'm sorry, I don't have a copy here. Oh, we'll have to rotate those as well. So if we could go back to previous exhibit.
So there's the breakdown, this is the...
Thank you. Page 224? Page 224.
Yeah, there you go, right there.
So as a new member to the council, right, and really reviewing these documents at home for the first time, can, you did a great presentation, but can you better help us newcomers, as council members, to understand what we should be looking at in these documents and where accountability would be held by the city to these documents?
Did you want to go first, or you want me to go ahead?
You can go first.
Okay. So development impact fees are fees that are established upon new development or change in use. And so essentially, if a house comes in and they're building a new single-family residential home, they're going to be assessed development impact fees, which are supposed to be the fees at the time that they're pulling the building permit that essentially pay for the home in perpetuity. And so they get assessed a water fee, a sewer fee, depending on what those impact fees are. So our latest study was completed by Tauschigen Associates, and that was back in 2016. And that is where we take what the city's needs are and what the city's future is. And so if you're looking at the breakdown of fees, so on page 226, if you could scroll down a little further, those are where we have, we establish development impact fees for residential land uses, and then we also establish them for commercial and industrial uses. And so we break, we break down those development impact fees in terms of departments, where those, where those monies need to go and how much money is going to be needed and what's needed in those departments. And so you've got transportation fees, which are for single and multifamily projects, and those are basically streets, roads, things needed in the, for, in the transportation area. Police, that's the fee that's paid to go towards the police department, to fund the police department. City Hall, parks, recreation. Parks and recreation fees together are the largest fee we have, and that's because our 2016 study takes into consideration our future community park, which we did a master plan on, a park viewing of what we were looking at at that park, how much it would essentially cost us to achieve that park over however many set of years. And then that fee is assessed to start collecting, to put towards those future improvements of the park. And that's what development impact fees are used for. Updates, replacements, depending on how that development impact fee is written. And so, so Pete has a listing in there on the development impact accounts, and it's basically the fund descriptions. And so the fund descriptions explain to you in general sense what those monies can be used for in the event you're using them. And so that's what the development impact fees are for. They're collected at new development or change of use. So it's also collected if you have a house, and it was a non-conforming use, and it was zoned commercial, and they decided to turn into a commercial use. Depending on that commercial use, which is listed as either retail, office, or if they end up moving to industrial or institutional in accordance with our development impact fee, they would pay the change of use fee to essentially put towards monies to the city to move towards that future development in those areas. And so a lot of these fees, you see, we used our parks fee most recently to help fund the new bathroom. We got a park grant that paid for majority of it. However, we picked the best option or the most expensive, nice restroom to put at Hogan Park because it's our most highly-used park, and the grant didn't cover the full amount. And so we essentially paid the difference of that with our parks fund, and then we were able to pay for that bathroom. So that would be an example. Certain areas allow us to pay for park improvements. Those are typically ones that we would cover, ones that are not already having established LDBADs, and so those would be covered here at direction of council. These funds are typically, when we're utilizing them, as a part of a budget for future projects. And so those funds are collected, and then if we're using them for transportation, is a big one that we use a lot of those monies on, it's collected, and we assign those to capital improvement projects that you see in your budgets. And if those monies are needed, they would go towards future projects.
So are all of those parked in a single interest-earning account?
They are. There's the separate funds for it. There's 201, 202, 203, 204, 205, 206, 7, 8, and 9. So when we collect those fees, they stay, they stay in those separate funds, and we do account for interest that's earned on them.
So then that breakdown that you were showing on page 224, which was the one that we had rotated over, you know, you're seeing what your balance is, and this is a report that we're required to put out annually in accordance with AB 1600. You have your balance from 2021 when it started, and then, yeah, we break out, you know, the income that was received, any interest, any expenses we had to those funds, any year-end adjustments that may have happened in accordance with budget changes, and then the fund balance. And then if there happens to be any inter-fund loan in those, those are listed as well, and then what our balance is at the end of that fiscal year.
So with the inter-fund loans, essentially, those monies are parked, but could be utilized in any one of these funds, 201 through 209? Is that correct?
Yes, if approved by council. I think it was at prior council directions where fun, if you look at Fund 201, there's a current balance at the end of fiscal year 2022, 2122 of $900,000, but of that amount, $833 was loaned to Fund 209.
And then Fund 209 is the City Hall Development Impact Fee, which was basically the, these buildings, purchasing of these buildings. And we're still paying back that loan.
That was very educational to me. Thank you both.
I'm a little slow here, so Pete, so forgive me. But if I'm looking at this, the difference between 204 and 205 is, so 205 started with a balance of 202,000, and then we took $93,367 and put that towards the new restroom building? Am I understanding that correct? Because that was the expense to wreck? Is that kind of how you follow your sheet? So the pluses show where the offsets are going amongst all the different funds, and then if there was a particular deduction, then you're showing it as a minus sign?
Yeah, of that amount, that $120,000 was transferred to Fund 204. It breaks it down into detail where it shows recreation fund transfer to office, and yes, it was for NS park replacement projects.
Okay.
By replacement project, you mean the bathroom?
Yes.
Any other questions on this information item? Thank you, ladies. Appreciate the information. We're going to move on to next administrative matters, number 10.
It's just an informational item at this point.
There's no action on it.
There's no action being taken.
The fees?
It's, no one is, the fees have already been adopted. This is just an annual report of the spreadsheet of how the fees have been expended. It's at the council's discretion. If you'd like to take public comment, you can, but it was agendized as an informational item, so you don't have to. There are no fees being adopted or amended at this time.
What about the monies that are actually in the funds?
That's what this is a report of.
It's a report of the funds. Let's open it up. Go ahead. What's your question, Kurt?
I'm not really addressing the developer impact fees or anything like that, but I wanted to talk about the INLU. INLU Housing Fund is the only one that's really, it's not a direct fund fee for connecting to water, to a police department, what have you. That's a developer incurred fee, so they don't have to build low-income housing. So in lieu, in a 10-home development, one of those homes has to be low-income, deed restricted. And rather than do that, they pay a certain amount of money, not the value of the house, but a certain value, and it goes into that fund. Now, you're looking at 201, and it says $898, or $898,000. That is erroneous. It's $66,000. And there, the city took a loan out for $800,000 out of that fund in 2013. That's the inter-fund loan. As you follow along, you'll see underneath that income, inter-fund loan payment. So that's the interest on that $800,000 that the city's paying. Is that coming out of the general fund, or is that, how, where do you accumulate that from?
So Fund 201 has a fund balance of $900,000, but then of that amount, the $833,000 was loaned to Fund 209. It does have a cash balance at the end of fiscal year 2122 of $66,213. I mean, $66,213.
Okay.
The income, it was an inter-loan fund payment that we've received was for about $1,300, and there were some year-end entries.
And where does that money come from?
The money, it's the interest that's earned against the loan. There's loan, loan payment interest earned on the fund.
The city is paying back the inter-fund loan to the INLU account, correct?
Yes.
And where does, where does the city get that money? Is that the general fund?
Not from the general fund.
Is it general fund reserve?
Not from the general fund reserve. It's from the cash balance in Fund 201.
So the fund is paying the interest to itself?
That's, I believe that's the way it's always been done by prior staff. I can look into it and find out and provide you with more information if needed.
You smell the dead fish in the room? Here's the deal. 2013, the city was going insolvent. The loan out on this building and the community center was driving the city within two months of being bankrupt. So they took out $1.55 million, $800,000 from the INLU fund, and then the remainder out of transportation and public works over here. Those monies theoretically are due back in seven years, and where's that money going to come from? So as you look in your budget year at the general fund and reserves, just think in the back of your head, minus $1,000, $1,555,000 debt was supposed to go back into those other line items. I realize it's all in one bank account, and they divide it all out, and interest is what it is. But I, what I wanted to speak to was the INLU, and you could do a whole agenda item on this. So if you guys are willing to do that at some point, maybe two of you can put it on the agenda, we need to look at that in reality. I think we need to do away with INLU and make developers develop low-income housing on new projects. Especially one coming up. You got 72 homes there, seven-plus homes should be low-income, indeed restricted, because that money goes into this fund, and councils take it out to pay the other bills. So it's disingenuous, at the very least, to have the fund there, and we're looking for low-income housing, you know? That's what it's for. So again, we could have a whole discussion on that and probably at some other time, but wanted you to be aware. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll close that and move on to item number 10, review and approve the council on local appointment lists. Staff?
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so this item before you is to review and approve the council appointments list. As you know, we have new council members present, and so after every municipal election, we always review these items or review these boards and highlight which members need to be updated and/or appointed to serve in those capacities. So this year, the listing is a little bit different. We had separated out council-appointed, a council appointment list, which are areas that you would appoint a council member to serve as the city's representative on certain boards. And then the next listing that starts on page 238 is a local appointments list. The local appointments lists are boards that this legislative body has the authority to appoint, people who are not council members, to those boards. And so we will visit the council agenda or the council items first, and I'm just going to review over each of the committees. A change that we made this year was I added the two-plus-two city school district committee on there. In the past, we have had difficulty, not in the recent past, but having two, having two members present at those meetings. Prior council member Swift, as well as Mayor Pro Tem Hagan, have been consistently attending those meetings probably the last year or so, maybe a year and a half. But we do have both of them listed on those boards, and former Mayor Swift's, or former council member Swift's item is up for replacement. And then if Mayor Pro Tem Hagan is interested or not in either staying on the board or putting that one out for appointments, he can do so. That meeting is the second Thursday of each month at 8:00 in the morning, and it's typically located at the school district, unless otherwise it would be here.
Should I comment right now?
You're more than welcome to. Yes.
Yeah, I'll stay on the board.
Okay.
So we're looking for one more replacement.
You're doing all of them, or we're just doing one at a time?
Either way, we could go one at a time.
See, one at a time would be easiest, I think.
Yeah, that's fine.
Just make it on the list.
And so basically, this is the opportunity for council members to either, one, express interest in a board that they would be interested in sitting on, or if they're currently sitting on a board and it's too much for them, or they're not interested in being in that board, to let the council know, hey, I'm on this board right now, I have other time commitments, I've, it's conflicting with my schedule, I'm willing to, you know, be the alternate and/or give this position if somebody else is interested in it.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question about this item?
Yes.
This is just a suggestion, and we would need input from legal, but all five of us have children within the school district of school age, and I think all five of us could provide some very valuable feedback to the school district. And I know previously, the school district has a rotation where it's not the same two members, and then as a whole, as the body of a whole school board gets different input from different members. And I was wondering if my fellow council members would be interested in entertaining a rotation for this particular board. That way, the school board receives input from all five of us on a rotating basis.
If there's interest, you know, let's say all five of you were interested, what I would suggest is maybe you name, one person is the main, four is the alternates, and then by being named as the alternates, you can just sort of decide among yourself any given month which of you would like to sub in and out. That would be my suggestion. I think that would probably be cleanness, rather than having to come up with some sort of schedule to rotate in and out, but up to you. You could do it that way if you wanted as well.
Are there thoughts on that? Excuse me.
I would like to express interest in being added to the two-by-two city and school district committee.
Quite honestly, I'm bringing it up because I also have interest. My son attends Escalon schools, but I also know that Counselor Walker is actively involved in some other things related to the school district, and I don't want to step on her toes, and I don't want to step on Mayor Pro Tem Hagan's toes, which is why I'm offering the suggestion.
My kids actually aren't in this school district, and I would express that I don't have any interest in participating in this committee at this time.
I would love to, but Thursdays at 8:00 in the morning, I'm at work. I can't make a commitment to that, so I would be out. So I would have, my personal thought, I have no problem with the three of them working out some sort of a schedule with a primary and a couple of alternates, and they work out set agreements to rotate through those means. I would have no problem with that if that is what we would like to do.
Okay. Okay, so.
Is this something I have to move on an action item with a motion, or do we can just appoint it and be good?
I just wanted to confirm that at this time, we would have Mayor Protem Hagan as the representative, and then council members Walker and Strowman as alternates. Is that accurate?
Me, that would be.
Anybody else good with that?
Whatever you guys want to do, it's fine.
I think we made a decision.
Are you good with being the representative, the main representative?
Yeah, I can. Yeah, I'm all fun Thursday, so that works.
No motion, no motion.
No motion needed, all right? Let's see the next one.
Let me just make that update here. And these terms would expire essentially after the next election, whenever those people are sworn in. And so the last time we updated the appointments listing is, was January 6th of 2024, so the new date would fall on 1/17/2026, just so you know where. So the next board is the San Joaquin County Advisory Water Commission. This representative to be appointed, once they're appointed at this level, it's forwarded on to the Board of Supervisors to be approved at county level. The term lengths are typically four years. It is the third Wednesday of every month at 1:00 p.m., and any special meetings as required, and it's located on Hazleton and Stockton. And both the representative and the alternate need to be replaced for this meeting. They are a very active group because they're having to do with water and all of the water issues that are moving forward right now in the state of California and at county level, and regionally in the Central Valley. And so they definitely meet at least on a monthly basis.
Any interest out there for anybody here? I know that that conflicts with us, Jay Cog.
Yeah.
For me, for executive committee. I can't be in two places.
Conflicts with my work schedule.
I do have interest in, in that commission.
We have one, anybody else? Are they backup alternate?
Fortunately, I have a professional commitment at that time.
I'm willing to be the alternate.
Okay. There we go.
All right. I'll go ahead and list Jeremy as the rep, and, excuse me, Councilmember Ingle as the rep, and Councilmember Walker as the alternate. Moving on to the next group is the CDBG, which is the Community Development Block Grant HUD Policy Advisory Committee. These meetings are held on an as-needed basis. We have not had a meeting at this group, I would say, at least in four years or so. So it typically happens when there is some type of policy issue that needs to be resolved. And it's a meeting of other council members of other cities that come together with, with ours of the county and discuss CDBG policy.
So this meeting would be kind of set, kind of as-needed kind of thing?
Correct. They would reach out to staff, advising that they're going to have this meeting, and then we would reach out to you, letting you know that that meeting is moving forward and whether or not you'd be able to attend.
I could do that. That wouldn't be a problem.
I could do that as well, if anybody else is good with that. I can do that.
Mayor Protem Hagan as the rep, and Mayor Bellinger as the alternate. All right. The next one is the Central Valley Division League of California Cities Executive Committee. These are as-needed, regular meetings of the committee of this division are held at such time and places as the president or executive committee may direct. They typically put out some type of mail or at least three weeks' notice on when they're having a, a meeting. And both the representative and the alternate need to be updated for this group.
I'm interested in this one.
Anybody else got the ability to do that? Going once? Going twice?
I could be put on it as an alternative, as needed.
All right. Councilmember Strowman as the representative, Mayor Bellinger as the alternate. The next meeting group is the Integrated Waste Management Committee, and this is the regular and alternate task force membership that has elected council members from each of the cities in San Joaquin County and a member of the Board of Supervisors on it. Meetings are also held as needed. This is also another group that probably hasn't met in, I'd say, pre-COVID. Typically, a lot of this stuff is handled in-house by staff, and then when there is a need for policies and other things to be reviewed, they, they reach out to staff to move forward with these meetings.
These meetings are more flexible, obviously, if they happen.
Correct.
They haven't happened in a while.
Yes, they send out a notification saying there's a need for their meeting, and then they give you times that are available and ask you to respond with what you're open to.
I can do that.
I'll take on the alternate role.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem Hagan as the representative, Councilmember Strowman as the alternate. I listed the Local Agency Formation Commission, which is also known as LAFCO, on this listing. However, the City of Escalon rotated off the commission as a voting member in May of 2021 and will not be rotated back on until 2029, so there is no need to fill that position at this time. But I'm keeping it on the listing so that when our term comes up, we would move forward. They, they take a certain amount of the cities and keep them on a rotational basis, so I left that on there. But they do meet every second Thursday of the month at 9:00 a.m., if you're ever interested in listening to their meetings. As you know, they handle a lot of annexations and other things that happen in other cities within the county. We also have the Personnel Committee, which is, was established back in 2009, and these are to have two members to review personnel policies and guidelines to provide city manager direction, to bring recommendations to the full council for consideration. This committee has no jurisdiction over employees and cannot recommend discipline of an employee pursuant to the city's current form of government, as well as the established personnel system rules and regulations and negotiated MOUs. And so this is basically to review updates or anything that's changed in, in our personnel policies or system rules, and then provide recommendation to council when it goes before the council for approval. And so both, both representatives, and these are just equal representatives, no alternates, they would meet as like a subcommittee to review these items, and both would need to be replaced.
I'd be interested in that. I'd lend a hand in there as well.
Mayor Bellinger and Councilmember Ingle for the Personnel Committee. Okay, and then we have the San Joaquin Council of Governments Board of Directors. These meetings are the fourth Thursday of the month at 4:00 p.m., and then there's an executive meeting on the third Friday of every month at noon, which is the lunch hour. They're located in Stockton. For the last few years during COVID, they were allowing remote call-in. They will be switching back to in-person meetings, and so their address in Stockton is off of Weber or Weber Avenue, depending on how you say it. And we currently have Mayor Bellinger as the Escalon representative, and we do need an alternate for that board. And then if you're, whether you're interested or not.
I'm okay for now. We're going to work with Diane.
We would need an alternate.
Go in over there and negotiate some things with, but.
Yeah.
I have interest as an alternate.
Add Councilmember Ingle as the alternate. And then the last board that we have listed for council appointments is the San Joaquin Valley Unified Air Pollution Control District City Selection Committee. This special committee consists of one member selected by a majority vote of the council and each city located within the district. An alternate can be selected to attend if the primary member is unable to meet. The meetings are called also on an as-needed basis. Meetings are teleconference between three locations. They have a location in Fresno, Modesto, and Bakersfield, and they typically have you report to the closest one to attend the meeting. And so we need the main representative updated, and then we do have Mayor Protem Hagan listed as the alternate. I believe they've met once, maybe twice, in the last four years.
What exactly do they do?
So they have to do with air pollution, and so they typically have meetings related to anything that's going on air quality-wise, or any new regulations that the state is moving forward on and implementing those into county. They also, I haven't had to attend one of those meetings in a while, but they also have projects that they review, and if some of them need to go before the selection committee, they might have to act on projects, I believe. But they haven't met in quite some time, and so I really can't recall what the last thing they discussed.
Do they report up to the California Air Resource Board, or is there just some advisory?
It's the, they're like advisory to that board, is my understanding.
So they would take our concerns up to the Cal Resource Board?
Fortunately, I have a professional conflict of interest. Because of the projects that I'm currently planning and working require their approval, and so I don't think it would smell good for me to be on their committee.
I could stay, I could stay there. It's fine.
Do you want to be representative or alternate?
Either, either one's fine. Does anyone have an interest in being representative? If not, I'll be the representative.
How often are they meeting?
As needed, and I don't recall them having a meeting for a very long time.
I can be Mayor Protem's backup on that.
Okay, so Mayor Protem Hagan as the representative, and Mayor Bellinger as the alternate. All right, and so we will go ahead. At staff level, what we'll do is update this listing, and we will also reach out to each of these agencies and advise that new appointments have been made through these boards, and give them your contact information, which would include your city email for them to reach out to you directly. And then they would also include me as their, me or Courtney, depending on the circumstance, as their contact as staff, to make sure that if they're unable to reach you, they can get ahold of us to follow up with scheduling of meetings and/or transfer of any documents that may be needed for you to be able to prepare yourself for meetings. So moving along to the local appointments list, this is a list that's required to be updated annually and put out to the public so that people are aware of what boards this legislative body has the ability to appoint to. And just, just going to do a review, no changes are needed at this time. We have the Mosquito Vector Control Board, which we have Resident Gary Haskin on, and his term doesn't expire until the end of December of 2024. We also have the Planning Commission, which you are aware we have currently two vacancies on that we are currently taking application on. And then we also list the terms of expiration for the existing planning commissioners, which includes Steve Castellanos, Mark Sarkozy, and Barbara Willis. We also have our Recreation Commission, which some of you may be aware, we have a vacancy on there as well. This commission is unique from the Planning Commission in that it is open to the residing within the Escalon Unified School District, not subject to city limits. And so it does have a little bit more flexibility in area to provide comment and participation from our school district area. And so we do have one vacancy there, and that was from Councilmember Walker moving up into the council. And so we currently have Roger Beeman, Cassie Govia, Debbie Merkin, and Danny Trejo serving, and their terms are listed on there as well. So as they expire, obviously, we put out for application. And then, as indicated earlier this meeting, our representative for the San Joaquin County Commission on Aging is Ann Shaddix, and her term is listed as coming up for expiration in August later this year. And so typically, that board would reach out to us and let us know it's coming, and at that point, council would make the decision on whether to reappoint or to put it out for any other interest, and that would be at council's discretion later on in the year.
Thank you, Ann, for that. Appreciate it.
And then our last one is the San, San Joaquin Council of Governments. San Joaquin Council of Governments has lots of boards. One of the other boards they have, besides Executive Board of Directors and, and Transportation and Management and Finance, they also have a Citizens Advisory Committee, the CAC, and Resident Gracie Marks is our representative for that board, and her term expires the end of 2024.
Thank you, Gracie. Appreciate the help on that.
And that is the update I have for you at this time on those appointments, and thank you very much for moving those forward, and we will get those going and get you guys the information you need to be able to participate and attend those meetings.
Appreciate that. Thanks, everybody, for volunteering where we could, so we can cover those commitments for us here at the city. We're going to move on to council communications. We'll start with Councilman Ingle. What's your got tonight?
Well, Happy New Year, everybody. Haven't got to see you since. I did want to mention, and I don't know if we need to get it on the agenda, but there have been several issues with the video feed over the last several meetings, both for Planning Commission and for council. Is there something that we can do to ensure that our public at large has the ability to view that from home? Or if they can't live, the ability to watch the replay? Because the replays appear to also be affected, as well as any transcripts that go along with the video.
Yes, we can move forward. If I can get a consensus on council, a lot of these things cost a significant amount of money at times. We have all brand-new equipment, and so basically, every time it's malfunctioned, it's been something different. This time, they can, we can hear them completely, and they can't hear us, and so we could definitely look into that. I guess if it, as long as you're open to that, in the past, I believe, you know, the, we were trying to address the issue as, as non-expensive as we can, and we have been successful, but obviously, not that success, successful because something else keeps malfunctioning. So I can go ahead and, and do that with your guys.
Is this something our IT department works with?
This is not IT.
Or is this something else?
IT tries to assist us where they can with this. IT does not handle our audio. We have a separate media company that assists us, and they were recently, I don't recall if it's the same one. We had our regular system, and then we had improvements that were made to the system to provide this service, which includes the go-to, and that was all COVID-related. And so they try to assist us as best they can with what we had as existing and what we've put in as new and upgraded.
Yep, Gracie, did we not get, is there a service agreement or a certain amount of help that they're obligated to give us as needed before we start incurring costs?
I don't believe so. I just believe it's an hourly cost to make those, those updates. And so we have been paying them in the past and addressing the issue, and then something else happens, and so we can go ahead and, and do that, and I could just keep you on the loop if it becomes something ridiculously expensive.
Quick hit phone calls, I don't have a problem with that, but.
Yeah. This is new. This is the first time it's where we can actually hear them, and they can't hear us. Usually, it's either both, and YouTube, excuse me, yeah, YouTube appears to be working. I haven't had any complaints on that. Usually, somebody text messages me if the YouTube's not working.
YouTube would be available for review, it sounds like, with audio and video.
Yeah, I haven't had any indication. It'll usually send me an email if something's failed on that end.
They have, so we can go back and review, and there are several missing sections from city council and planning commission meetings on the YouTube replays.
Is this for tonight or for the last?
I don't know about this evening. I can check that tomorrow. But previous, the last several weeks, several meetings.
Okay.
When I've tried to go back and watch replays, not all of it was available.
Okay.
Audio was missing, sections were missing, transcripts were incorrect.
Okay.
So do you need a consensus on this? Is that how it is?
I mean, as long, yeah, if all of you are in grants, that, that's okay. If it comes out to be something excessive, I'll bring it back to you.
Okay with that?
I am too.
Yes, please.
I don't have any other communications. Councilman Strowman?
Of course, I have some items. Chief, any update on the speeding situation on Dever Circle?
Dever Circle.
That's why we're doing the speed bumps, and we're looking for the radar trailer.
Yes. I'm still waiting for the third quote. We have to send them out to get three different quotes, at least, and get that in place. I should begin that this week, and that first next week. And then we'll decide. I'll bring the quotes back to staff, I mean, to you guys, and you guys can decide on which one you guys want to go with, go with the. guys can decide on which one you guys want to go with, go with the most expensive, least expensive, they all got different bells and whistles. It depends on what, you know, fits the department better.
I thought we had already approved in the last meeting, a certain dollar amount for that, to just make that decision, can we not? Radar was in the decision, we shouldn't have to have it come back, should we?
I don't believe so.
If it's within the, within the decision we made.
Okay, then.
But it's included in there.
Yeah, they'll come back with that.
Take a look and make sure, but if, if we've already made, I thought we made a decision with a budgetary number for that at the last meeting. If we've done that and that's within that, buy the best one for your department.
Which leads me to my next question, chief. When was the last time we did a citywide traffic study for speeding?
I don't think we've ever done citywide.
I don't think so.
We typically pick higher areas of town and run them there because they run about 10,000 to 20,000 per street.
It's something that I think we, I mean, obviously, we don't want to incur the $10,000 to $20,000 cost, but I feel like speeding is an excessive problem throughout town and with the officers you have on duty, it makes it kind of difficult. And so, I think we definitely need to consider looking at maybe with this new radar system.
I believe it's got reporting.
We can do that, that's part of the radar. We could do that. I can get Sergeant Hargraves, who's very techy, set up the computer to where it tracks the speeds and of vehicles and things like that. So, definitely, we can do that.
I just see, I mean, on my street, there's speeding, Dever Circle, First Street, I mean, any of the major corridors. It seems like everyone is complaining about speeding and there's only so much you and your team can do. So, it's just something that I think we need to look at holistically as a city. Okay?
I could do that.
Okay. Mr. Collins, just want to say publicly, appreciate you stepping up and helping out with the water meter issue last week.
You're welcome.
It's very important, but that kind of leads me into my next kind of thought or idea. We may want to look at in the spring before we start the crazy watering season again. So, for those of you that don't know, to give a little bit of background, there was a complaint on Escalon residents made about water, an excessive bill received. A woman, 85 years old, received a way, way over usage water bill. So, Justin, I don't mean to single you out, but also I really want to say thank you to Sopee and Dominique for working on that issue with that resident. But for those of you that don't know, we received an insert when we went to these new smart meters, how you can sign up and see if you have a water leak. And then, it just kind of dropped. And now, we have residents throughout town who are getting these notices for excessive water use and I don't know what the statistics are, but how many people actually signed up and are monitoring it, but it may be something that we want to consider doing a public workshop just to bring, just to educate people before we move into the crazy irrigation cycle of this is how you can monitor your water use, this is the app, et cetera, et cetera, just to bring them up to speed. Because as a result of this issue, what I've realized is that city staff doesn't have the time to monitor the over-usage, neither does Public Works and we're putting the responsibility back on the constituents, but yet I don't think the constituents have all of the information. And so, that's something we may want to look at.
Not sure about a workshop, but we can probably put another notice before spring hits and drop it into the mailer to advise people again.
It's my understanding it gets ran in the newsletter advertisement for the smart meter. We can, we can share it more with people, but typically, the people who are like interested in that kind of stuff usually inquire, how can I look at my bill? And so, we'll give them that information and we can do better at providing that information or, you know, more often. But it's really, it's really ability because it is an app and, you know, it's on your device or you're signing in on your computer. And Councilmember Strumman's pointed out that there are people in town that don't utilize those type of items. But that, that's, that is where you can watch your daily consumption and figure out a pattern much quicker than, than when the city is, is preparing bi-monthly billing. Essentially, we're two months behind and so we, we, it comes to our attention, but it, if it happens at that, at the certain period, it could be up to two months before we see it. And if it's not a significant leak, which in this instance, it was a very large leak, it, it could possibly, you know, fly under the radar if it's not showing any type of pattern. And so, we can, we're more than happy to put that information out there more frequently and, and put it on our Facebook. And when people definitely ask or inquire, we do provide that information to them.
Thank you.
No problem.
I'm almost done. Any update on the letter to Caltrans regarding the traffic issue at Brennan and 120 and the previous council directed staff to put together a letter and a possible petition to go to Caltrans? Where is that issue?
Yes, so we're currently waiting on a copy of the traffic report. The most recent accident that occurred at that location was DUI incident that is currently under investigation and/or to be reviewed by the district attorney and so we're not able to get that traffic report until it's completed or closed out. And so, I've been in contact with Caltrans, checking status and they are just waiting on that traffic, on that traffic report to be able to review it and put that into their information on, on the study that they conducted there. And then, at that point, we were going to open up that petition and move forward with that letter of support.
This last question is just an overall question, but as new council members, what is the avenue to suggest items for next year's capital improvement budgets? What is the process?
Sure. That would be at, at budget time. And so, what we'll do is in March, typically, we'll provide a mid-year budget review and then come the month of June, we would have a, a budget workshop and/or budget review of the new budget. And at that time, if you have projects or things that want to be added into that, you would discuss as a council those projects and/or opportunities and then we would incorporate those into the budget.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Councilman Walker?
Happy New Year, everybody. Welcome back. I don't, well, no. So, I've noticed that on the city website, the contacts, the staff directory, excuse me, is still outdated and just wondering from staff when we can expect the city staff directory to be updated, to reflect the current staffing at the city.
Sure, I could have them update that this week.
Will do. Okay, besides that, thank you very much.
Mayor Pro Tem Hagan?
I had three things I was hoping to see if I can get a consensus on having the staff look into, to bring to discussion for us potentially. Looking into ways we can potentially recover costs, but also provide revenue without a lot of the housing development type stuff. First was looking deeper into the unfunded mandate commission. Apparently, there's a commission that for unfunded mandates like the, the garbage issue we had, there's a commission that's, the state government's supposed to, as, as my understanding, pay the local governments back for their mandates. And so, I wanted to see if we could look into that a little closer to see if we could recover some of the costs of that and potentially bring it back to the taxpayers if it's possible.
Sure. That item was brought to Attorney Splendorio's attention and he is putting something together to forward out to the council.
Okay. And then, the second thing I wanted to look into was a revenue driver that could help both our revenue we need in our town, but also to potentially help bring and stabilize costs of electricity for our, for our local constituents. Looking into solar farming. What's my understanding, the Landmark Division says that they're making about 21,000 to 40,000, 42,000 profit per acre. You can run 200 homes off about five to eight acres. So, there's a potential there, I think, to create revenue stream that we need for the city for a lot of the things that have been brought up through the last year or so. But at the same time, we can be able to stabilize rates in theory and potentially, if we're really lucky, bring rates down, but at the very least stabilize rates for the locals that live here. So, I'd like to look into that a little bit deeper and seeing if I can get consensus from the board to have the staff look into that deeper.
I have concerns with that as City of Lodi has an example of that. It's quite the train wreck in Lodi that they provide their own power to their citizens to the point that they don't allow folks to put solar on their house to connect to their grid. So, you're at the mercy of Lodi Power and if you know anybody in Lodi, they're paying more than PG&E currently. So, I, I struggle with the idea of an infrastructure to buy land and develop. I'm a little concerned about buying land, putting infrastructure, having staffing, having a whole nother enterprise fund to manage in such a small team, if you will, of city staff. That's a big chunk to bite off of in an arena that we're not familiar with. I'm, I'm really concerned with that idea.
Could I say something back?
Yeah, please.
So, that's what I want to look into and see pros and cons of as, as well as potentially partnering with, you know, like SSGID, MID, substations, so we're not necessarily running it. But looking at, is there an avenue here that's realistic for our citizens as well as the revenue stream for the town? So, that's kind of where I'm coming from. It's more of a deeper dive into the educational part to see, is there an avenue here that we can potentially pursue that would be beneficial to the town?
I think that just getting some pros and cons and, I mean, doesn't really hurt anything. And so, I, I think if, if staff can provide pros and cons, we're not making any decisions. We just want to, Mayor Pro Tem Hagan just wants to be more informed and there's no real decision that needs to be made. So, I, I think just to listen to it, there's no harm, no foul.
So, what I can do is I had, I'd actually put in a call to MID and our past representative that is no longer there, so I haven't gotten back. I can reach back out to them to see who we have as a contact there and kind of pick their brain on whether or not that's something that's available. We also have a PG&E rep that I could follow up with on that side because as you're aware, the, the city is split down the middle. The, the older part of town is PG&E, the newer part of town is MID, so we have both utility electrical companies in the, in the city. And then, we had solar projects that we moved forward via the council with NG, who did a lot of our solar projects and, and we can find out from them what the likely, likelihood is or what the process would be or, or information on that item as well. And I can give council an update on that once I get that information together.
Okay, and then, the third, third thing I wanted to look into ideally was pros and cons, the idea of jackboring infrastructure into the Liberty Business Park. I think if the infrastructure, if the infrastructure's there, businesses are going to want to go there. Most businesses don't want to wait around to see if the local government is going to have something available for them or not. They're looking to, hey, I want to start this business, I want to get it going, there's infrastructures there, you know, let me get in there versus waiting around and hoping that the local government might do that. So, I was hoping to see if we could look into the options there and whether or not there's an avenue, we can do it where the citizens, if we, if we fund it, do we get paid back from the developers? You know, is that a realistic option? Could we potentially do that through a, you know, a, a, a inner fund loan and then have that paid back potentially by developers as they come in? Was another option for revenue, it wasn't linked to the homes, it was linked to growth in business.
I'm definitely interested in hearing more about that.
Councilman, or Mayor Pro Tem Hagan, my only concern, here's my concern with Liberty Business Park. It's, it's truly a situation of which came first, the chicken or the egg? Because while we recognize that that may be an area for future development, it's been stated publicly that can the city take on that revenue stream or take on that expense to do jackboring? And so, which one goes first? And, I mean, just looking at it from a 50,000-foot level, I don't think that burden should be put necessarily on the city, but I think that the city should consider working with those, with the property owners and find out what the issues are. What are the holdups? Why hasn't Liberty Business Park been developed? Or what are those, what are those roadblocks? Is the, are the roadblocks from the city standpoint or the roadblocks from the property owner's standpoint and try to work collaboratively together to figure out where that fits?
I can't oppose that idea anymore. We discussed this two meetings ago and it was shown that the only way that I can get paid through is on the backs of our citizens through an enterprise fund. There's no other way to do it and there's no way to get their money back. So, I don't know what other avenue we can look at, but the only way, because it's part of our sewer system, is an enterprise fund. Rates go up, we front a 1. something million dollars, whatever the number is, it doesn't matter. The citizens have to pay through a rate increase and then we have to wish and hope the developers come. And then, we have to wish and hope that the type of business they bring, brings sales tax and property tax to us to make it a justifiable experience for the city. So, I don't know how we can put that on the backs of the rate payers in any way, shape or form to help a developer and a business produce profit for them. Why, why would our citizens pay for that development when they're not going to get anything back? They're not going to get their money back ever. It was already stated that there's no way to give a rate payer that money back with the rate increases. So, why would we put that on the backs of any of our rate payers? I don't know how we're bringing this back up. I really don't.
Mr. Mayor?
It's beyond me.
May I be able to respond to that?
Yeah.
So, I'm looking at whether or not there is other avenues besides putting it on their backs. In other words, do we have money that's available that we could potentially use for that, that's just sitting there, that can potentially bring this in? It's a chicken or egg scenario, you're 100% right. You know, if we want, as a citizen, as citizens, we don't want to grow the town, then you have to come up with novel ideas to produce revenue streams. So, this is one of those that I was looking into to see how realistic could it be? Obviously, we don't want it to be linked to rate increases and that kind of stuff, but if the money's available there, then it's potentially something we could pursue. And in the long run, it ends up leading to sales tax, which then leads to the type of revenue we want versus growth through homes. So, that's what I'm, I'm looking at.
I guess, my, so the point of me bringing that up was just stating that not necessarily committing to those funds, but trying to talk to those property owners that currently own property in Liberty Business Park and find out what the issues are. I would agree with Mayor Bellinger that in my discussions with Public Works and with city staff, I believe, and I said this as a private and with city staff, I believe, and I said this, um, as a private resident, that I believe that the, um, sewage treatment plant upgrades and the surface water projects need to take top priority, because that's where the inherent need is from the city before we even consider doing anything at Liberty Business Park.
It's been wholeheartedly developer-paid infrastructure that they put in in every project that's ever happened. I don't know why we would consider using any kind of public funding to help a developer, which they're in it for the money. They're not in it for us.
May I respond to that?
Yeah.
I'm not looking at money that you're not gonna give back. So you'd have to write it in, you'd have to write it in there, that the money comes back to the citizens as the infrastructure goes in. The, I think the biggest reason why it's not developed, I'm pretty confident in saying this, is because there is no infrastructure there. That's the reason. Um, otherwise, it would be developed. You've had, you know, we had to do, um, you know, utility agreements with, or, uh, Yates to get one in there. And as you fill that in, you're gonna have the revenue that's needed for a lot of these other things. So that's all I'm looking at. I'm not looking at using, um, taxpayer funds to, that they're not gonna get reimbursed for. I, I look at it from a business standpoint. When I run a business, I have to buy, um, inventory in order to make, make money. And so, just like anything, you have to, you know, start with the egg and grow it to a chicken. That's how I, that's how I see it. So maybe we just don't see eye to eye on that.
If I may jump in, we're, we're a little outside the scope of the general, but what we could do is, you know, place it on, for a discussion item, to, to take this part of the discussion back up and not necessarily give direction to staff at this point, but up to you. Um, if you can't, you know, you can either take the consensus now on whether to direct staff a certain way, or we can put it back on as an informational item on an agenda coming up.
I need three of you to agree whether or not you want it placed on the agenda.
Support you there, Andy. I'd like to hear more. As, as an incoming council member, I know it's been discussed, but I, I'm curious as if all avenues have been explored. All right, we have two. That doesn't meet it, so it doesn't make it on the next agenda then.
That's fine.
At this time. Great. What else you got?
Uh, that's it. I just wanted to look into those three things and see how we can move forward as, as a town. I hope you have a good New Year.
I'll make it quick. Um, just real quick, this is for Justin, I believe, possibly. Um, working with the high school, as everybody drives around, we're very proud of our high school and our state championships. Um, how do we go about updating our signage for the recent state championship for our football team?
Yeah, it's funny, I got a call from, uh, ex-council member Swift, inquiring about that. And the last signs were made by Dugo Signs, which I'm not sure if Mr. Dugo himself, Rose did the last ones, um, but I'm not sure if Mr. Dugo's doing or not. But it's as simply as getting hold of a sign shop, and we can either update them, we can add to them, we can put in new signs, however, for, um, see fit. Um, I know that the school district did do, I think maybe they paid for the, the signage itself, and then the city may have paid to put the sign up. I'm not quite sure there was a partnership there. Um, maybe that's something we can bring up on our, uh, school board meeting.
Be great, yeah. I'd like to continue the tradition of putting that.
Yeah, that'd be awesome.
I mean, I'd, I'd love to do that. So if we, whatever we did last time, if everybody's in agreement that we continue that trend, I guess. I don't wanna speak for the whole council here, if everybody else is okay with that.
I am.
Yeah, absolutely.
Concur with that.
Okay. Whatever we did last time, or whatever you need to facilitate.
Okay.
Pushing that project, let us know if there's roadblocks we need to deal with, but...
Got it.
Yeah, that'd be great to update them and tell everybody that drives through our town that, yeah, we're an awesome little town.
You got it.
Um, I'm gonna leave it at that, folks. I appreciate everybody hanging out with us, uh, for the long haul, and made it to the end here, and, uh, we'll adjourn this meeting and see you at the next one.